Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, December 21st, 2005. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Our meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Padilla, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session and if you're unable to reach your county elected official at the Hall of Administration, you can reach him here in City Hall. We have with us today County Supervisor Gloria Molina, former member of this body, and I see Steve Cooley in the audience, so honor best behavior today. Marco Fireball, former Assemblymember here today, must be something big on the agenda. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Hahn moves and Ms. Gruel seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing and they are street lighting ordinances and I believe 12 council members are expected today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold ordinances on the desk, but in the meantime, let me acknowledge that there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Next items, please.
The next items are also public hearing items and the recommendation for council action would be to continue the hearings and ordinances to January 13th.
Shhh. Colleagues, items 7 through 12 are now before us and again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and without objection, continue to January 13th.
Next item is item number 13, also a public hearing item. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 9 and the motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
Okay. Without any speaker cards being submitted, public hearings open and closed. Ms. Perry?
I just want to deny it.
Okay, is that a motion to deny?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion on the council, no requests to call this item special, let's open the roll on Ms. Perry's motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is denied. Colleagues, all items approved today are going forthwith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 14 through 52. Items 14 through 21 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all commission nominees on the desk, please.
And that would leave before council 20, which is a commissioner, but that is, the recommendation is to disapprove inasmuch as the nominee has withdrawn his name from consideration. That would be 20 and 22 through 52 and reports have been submitted on all the items that are noted, reports to be submitted except for item number 33.
Okay, members 20 and 22 through 52 are now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Ms. Hahn?
I'd like to call 28, 38, 43, 44, I'd like to take together.
Forty.
24, then 38, 43, 44.
Hold on, take it from the top again.
No, no. 24.
24.
Then I'd like to take, call special and take together, 38, 43, 44. And then I'd call special 46.
And 46. So 28 is or is not called special? 28, did you want to call 28 special? No? Okay. Other specials, Mr. Zine?
49. Are we up to 70 yet? Okay, 49.
49, call special. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Labange?
I'd call 27 special and if staff is here to come to the ropes, 27 special.
Okay. Staff is being summoned on item 27. Mr. Parks?
25 special.
Yes, 25 is called special. Other specials, colleagues? If not on the balance of the items, including the motion to disapprove on item number 20, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Items 22, 23 are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk for a moment?
I believe we have 12 members present. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved. Let's go back to items 1 through 6 ordinances that we are holding on the desk. We now have 12 members present. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Item number 48 was, I believe, just adopted. However, I understand there's a motion to refer that matter back to IGR Committee. The committee was canceled yesterday and there was no report submitted on it.
Mr. Zine moves reconsideration of item 48. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, item 48 is now back before us and unless there's objection, colleagues, we'll refer this matter back to committee. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 53 through 84. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Numbers 53 through 84 now before us without objection. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Specials, beginning with Mr. Labange.
Item 70.
70, call special by Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine?
I'm sorry.
Item 79.
Yes, 70.
70?
Seven of them, thank you.
Okay, other specials, colleagues? Items 53 through 84, going once, going twice. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Colleagues, items 85 and 86 are closed session matters, will hold those on the desk. Mr. Rosendale?
Beginning of January 11th.
Okay, colleagues, we have requests to continue item 86 to January 11th. Is there any objection? Seeing none?
To the attorney, is there any legal matters on this that we have to review?
Are we up on any timeframes or deadlines, Mr. City Attorney?
Not that I'm aware of. I spoke with our attorneys on this matter and they were on their way in.
Okay, well, let's consider continued and if we need to reconsider, we can do so later in the meeting. And is this the end of our regular agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Okay, colleagues, we do have two special meeting agendas that have been distributed. The first is posted for 10:30 a.m. It's not quite 10:30 yet. The second is posted for 11:30. I know there's urgent items on those agendas that people want to take out of order, but in the meantime, let's proceed with the regular agenda. When it comes 10:30, we'll go to the first special meeting. Item number three from the special meeting agenda is in reference to the L.A. Theater Center and we'll take that item out of order. And the second special meeting agenda again is posted for 11:30. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. President, item number 14 is confirmation of Mr. Michael Sirota to the Quality and Productivity Commission and an audits governmental efficiency committee report has been submitted to the council.
Okay, if Mr. Sirota will come forward, please. Colleagues, this is item 14. We do have a report recommending confirmation of Mr. Sirota. Members wishing to speak, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Sirota. You're from that fine area of the San Fernando Valley. A businessman, well-respected. Do most of your work for the community for free? Thank you. Correct?
Correct.
The recommendation came forward because of your concern for the community, concern about quality, concern about delivering to the public needs, the public good, the public will. Can you briefly explain your business involvement in the community and what aspects and how quality and productivity have assisted you and some of those other businesses in the San Fernando Valley? In particular, the third district, the western San Fernando Valley?
Well, I'm a...
Use the microphone.
Okay, okay. I'm owner of Woodland Printing, which is located in Canoga Park. I'm also president of the Weneka Chamber of Commerce. I'm one of the board of directors of the Canoga Park Chamber of Commerce. I'm also president of the Los Angeles Police Department Jeopardy Program. We help kids at risk, that's in conjunction with LAPD. Also, we are a member of the Main Street Canoga Park and this year, 2005, Canoga Park is the award of the All-American City thanks to Mr. Zine. Appreciate the help with that. And we have changed the whole landscape of Canoga Park. I've been there for 25 years and it's a real nice city to go to now. We have the Madrid Theater, all the buildings have been upgraded and the whole area has come to be a beautiful place.
So with your experience in Canoga Park, All-American City, and your experience in the valley, with this commission, you can take that information and that philosophy and blend it through to the Quality and Productivity Commission so we can have that type of activity citywide throughout the city of Los Angeles.
Yes. What I've learned so far about the city, which has been just things I've learned in the last few days, it's an amazing place. We have a really great city. We have outstanding departments that are doing a very good job and my position with the commission is to reward these departments for doing a good job.
And that in turn serves the public good because the taxpayers are paying the bills and deliver, and we deliver as the city, the services to those people.
Well, the things that the...
Hold on a second. Mr. President, can we get some water in the chamber?
Sergeant, this side of the ropes is actually behaving today. It's the public side today that's getting a little noisy. If you can help us out, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, the projects that the departments and teams and people in the city have been working on for the last few years that I've read about, they've saved millions of dollars for the city, millions of dollars for the city. And I'm very proud of them and I think they should be rewarded.
And oftentimes, it's not recognized.
Exactly, it's not recognized. And we're also looking forward to getting the word out to other people besides city people. We have this luncheon once a year, but we have to get the word out to other areas of the city, other residents, to let them know that what a great job the city is doing.
Okay, thank you. I think you'll serve well in that commission. I know the other commissioners have that same excitement, enthusiasm, and rewarding the city employees and disseminating information to the people of Los Angeles. So welcome aboard, recommend the approval for Mr. Mike Sirota. I think you know him too, don't you, Wendy? Everybody knows Mike Sirota. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Before calling on the next speaker, Sergeant, I'm going to ask that you keep the aisle weights clear. Members of the public who are here for the meeting, please take a seat. There are plenty of seats available. If you can't find a seat and insist on having conversations, we're going to ask that you exit the rear of the chambers and come back in when you're ready to have a seat. Sergeant, if we can ask for your help, please.
Ms. Gruel, followed by Mr. Bissata.
Thank you. Actually, our new audits chair, I'm going to... You sure? Okay. I just wanted to stand up and thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee and commission. It's critically important. As all of us in this room know, change is difficult in the city and giving, as I heard
If there's no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Ms. Hawke?
I'd like to call 28, 38, 43, 44. I'd like to take together. Twenty-four, then 38, 43, 44.
Hold on, take it from the top again.
There now. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Then I'd like to take, call special and take together 38, 43, 44. And then I'd call special 46.
And 46. So 28 is or is not called special? 28, did you want to call 28 special? No? Okay. Other specials, Mr. Zein?
Forty-nine. Are we up to 70 yet? Okay, 49.
Forty-nine called special. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Labange?
I'd call 27 special and if staff is here to come to the ropes, 27 special.
Okay. Staff is being summoned on item 27. Mr. Parks?
Twenty-five special.
Yes, 25 is called special. Other specials, colleagues? If not, on the balance of the items, including the motion to disapprove on item number 20, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Items 22, 23 are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk for a moment?
I believe we have 12 members present. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those items are approved. Let's go back to items one through six ordinances that we are holding on the desk. We now have 12 members present. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Item number 48 was, I believe, just adopted. However, I understand there's a motion to refer that matter back to IGR Committee. The committee was canceled yesterday and there was no report submitted on it.
Mr. Zein moves reconsideration of item 48. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. Item 48 is now back before us unless there's objection, colleagues. We'll refer this matter back to committee. Next side.
Next items are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 53 through 84, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Numbers 53 through 84 now before us without objection. I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Specials, beginning with Mr. Labange.
Item 70.
Seventy, call special by Mr. Labange. Mr. Zein?
I'm sorry?
Item 79.
Yes. Seventy.
Seventy?
Seven of them, thank you.
Okay. Other specials, colleagues? Items 53 through 84. Going once, going twice. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Colleagues, items 85 and 86 are closed session matters. We'll hold those on the desk. Mr. Rosendahl? Okay. Colleagues, we have requests to continue item 86 to January 11th. Is there any objection? Seeing none.
To the attorney, is there any legal matters on this that we have to review?
Are we up on any time frames or deadlines, Mr. City Attorney?
Not that I'm aware of. I spoke with our attorneys on this matter and they were on their way in.
Okay. Well, let's consider it continued and if we need to reconsider, we can do so later in the meeting. And is this the end of our regular agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Colleagues, we do have two special meeting agendas that have been distributed. The first is posted for 10:30 a.m. It's not quite 10:30 yet. The second is posted for 11:30. I know there's urgent items on those agendas that people want to take out of order. But in the meantime, let's proceed with the regular agenda. When it comes 10:30, we'll go to the first special meeting. Item number three from the special meeting agenda is in reference to the L.A. Theater Center and we'll take that item out of order. And the second special meeting agenda again is posted for 11:30. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. President. Item number 14 is confirmation of Mr. Michael Sirota to the Quality and Productivity Commission and an audits governmental efficiency committee report has been submitted to the council.
Okay. If Mr. Sirota will come forward, please. Colleagues, this is item 14. We do have a report recommending confirmation of Mr. Sirota. Members wishing to speak, beginning with Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Sirota. You're from that fine area of the San Fernando Valley. A businessman, well-respected. Do most of your work for the community for free? Thank you. Correct?
Correct.
The recommendation came forward because of your concern for the community, concern about quality, concern about delivering to the public needs, the public good, the public will. Can you briefly explain your business involvement in the community and what aspects and how quality and productivity have assisted you and some of those other businesses in the San Fernando Valley? In particular, the third district, the western San Fernando Valley?
Well, I'm a...
Use the microphone.
Okay, okay. I'm owner of Woodland Printing, which is located in Canoga Park. I'm also president of the Weneka Chamber of Commerce. I'm a board of directors of the Canoga Park Chamber of Commerce. I'm also president of the Los Angeles Police Department Jeopardy Program. We help kids at risk. That's in conjunction with LAPD. Also, we... I'm a member of the Main Street Canoga Park. And this year, 205, Canoga Park is the award of the All-American City thanks to Mr. Zein. Appreciate the help with that. And we have changed the whole landscape of Canoga Park. I've been there for 25 years. And it's a real nice city to go to now. We have the Madrid Theater. All the buildings have been upgraded. And the whole area is come to be a beautiful place.
So with your experience in Canoga Park, All-American City, and your experience in the valley, with this commission, you can take that information and that philosophy and blend it through to the Quality and Productivity Commission so we can have that type of activity citywide throughout the city of Los Angeles?
Yes. What I've learned so far about the city, which has been just things I've learned in the last few days, it's an amazing place. We have a really great city. We have outstanding departments that are doing a very good job. And my position with the commission is to reward these departments for doing a good job.
And that in turn serves the public good because the taxpayers are paying the bills and deliver, and we deliver as the city, the services to those people.
Well, the things that the...
Hold on a second. Mr. President, can we get some water in the chamber?
Sergeants, it's... This side of the ropes is actually behaving today. It's the public side today that's getting a little noisy. If you can help us out, please.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Go ahead.
Well, the projects that the departments and teams and people in the city have been working on for the last few years that I've read about, they've saved millions of dollars for the city. Millions of dollars for the city. And I'm very proud of them and I think they should be rewarded.
And oftentimes, it's not recognized.
Exactly. It's not recognized. And we're also looking forward to getting the word out to other people besides city people. We have this luncheon once a year. But we have to get the word out to other areas of the city, other residents, to let them know that what a great job the city is doing.
Okay, thank you. I think you'll serve well in that commission. I know the other commissioners have that same excitement, enthusiasm, and rewarding the city employees and disseminating information to the people of Los Angeles. So welcome aboard. Recommend the approval for Mr. Mike Sirota. I think you know him too, don't you, Wendy? Everybody knows Mike Sirota. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Before calling on the next speaker, Sergeants, I'm going to ask that you keep the aisleways clear. Members of the public who are here for the meeting, please take a seat. There are plenty of seats available. If you can't find a seat and insist on having conversations, we're going to ask that you exit the rear of the chambers and come back in when you're ready to have a seat. Sergeants, we're going to ask for your help, please. Ms. Grul, followed by Mr. Wissad.
Thank you. Actually, our new audits chair, I'm going to... You sure? Okay. I just wanted to stand up and thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee and commission. It's critically important. As all of us in this room know, change is difficult in the city. And giving, as I heard you respond to Mr. Zein, the importance of rewarding people coming up with ideas. And we haven't quite figured out, and your help on this would be very beneficial, as to encourage that kind of thinking outside the box. And we just had an example last week. We passed the creation consolidation of the Office of Public Safety, which was an idea that we came up with with a lot of people who'd been involved in the Quality and Productivity Commission two years ago. And it took us two years to get it through all the processes and to get buy-in. And so we have to change the culture a bit about change is okay and creating that environment for efficiency. So I look forward to your experience, your expertise, and your ability to say, we do have to reward. And we have to think of how we can sometimes spend money to save money. Because you have to be able to say, this is something worth doing. So I'm excited about your interest in serving on this and look forward to sitting down with you and sharing some of our experiences we've had here in the city, but also to hear from you about how we can be helpful and how we can, I think, even elevate the commission. Marty Cooper was here yesterday, who was approved and appointed and talked about the fact that we have diminished the staff on the Quality and Productivity. I mean, there was three at one time. We're down to one. Is that really the best efficient use as well? Are we going to be able to be as effective? So look forward to... Just wanted to stand up and congratulate you and thank you and encourage you to question and think outside the box. So thank you very much for your interest in doing this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Wissad?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And a few days ago, Mr. Sirota appeared before the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee. The committee was thoroughly impressed with Mr. Sirota's background, his ideas for the commission. And we're excited. We're excited about the addition of Mr. Sirota and Mr. Cooper, who was approved by this council yesterday, about their ideas, willingness, and the effort to make this commission a lot more visible, not only here at city council chambers, but in the public, where we need to be a bit more responsive. We need to be out there, working with the public more to find more efficient ways to run this government and to find more creative ways to reach out to the public and get them involved in our city government. So thank you for your willingness to serve and thank you for appearing at the committee.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on confirmation. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for serving the city and we'll see you back in the valley. That, colleagues, is item 14. As I mentioned before, colleagues, we do have a special item on the first special meeting agenda. We can recess the regular meeting now. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcia, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zein, Padilla, 14 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Special meeting is now in session. First order of business, please.
First items before council are items which public hearings have been held, items one through four. Item one of this meeting is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to take...
Let's actually call that special and continue that back to the regular meeting.
Okay. Then that would leave before council items two, three, and four. And reports have been submitted on three and four.
Colleagues, two, three, and four of the special meeting is now before us. Public hearings have been held. A motion would be required to reopen these public hearings. Specials, beginning with Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two be held, continued until the first meeting in January. I believe that's the 10th.
Okay. Any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number two from the special meeting? Seeing none, so ordered.
Dealing with the money for the $50,000.
Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks? Any specials?
No, not on this, I'm sorry.
Okay. Then, colleagues, we have items three and four of the special meeting still before us. Let's open the roll on these items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Something in the eggnog this morning? Boy, it's loud. Next item, please.
Next items are items five, six, and seven, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these items. The public hearings are open and closed. Any requests for specials? Mr. Parks? Item seven, call special by Mr. Parks. Any members requesting items five or six to be called special? If not, then let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay. Those are approved. Let's continue to hold item seven on the desk. Let's now return to the regular meeting and resume consideration of commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Next items before council are items 15, 16, 17, and 18. And those are all confirmations to the Metropolitan Water District. I believe reports have been submitted on items 16, 17, and 18. Committee was held this morning.
All right. If they can all come forward, please. Colleagues, we have our nominees to the MWD Board now before us. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Council President Padilla. I just wanted to state for the record that these individuals are very well-qualified. We had meetings with them, several of us council members. We had the committee hearing of the policy committee on this matter. And basically, what they're going to be doing is representing us, the people of Los Angeles, when it comes to water issues at the MWD, which has dozens of members, over 30 members. And our representation is going to be critical and important because when it comes to water issues, there's probably no issue on earth that man, people, actually fight over more and to the finest detail than water issues. So we have some very intelligent, qualified people with various backgrounds. And I just wanted to say that according to myself and the committee, we passed them unanimously. And we want to thank you and appreciate your volunteer work on behalf of the people of Los Angeles to make our access and our appropriate access to water heard and also to make sure that we are doing what's right for the people of Los Angeles on this very critical matter. So thank you all very much for volunteering your time and your expertise for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. As you said about water, it's so important. And I appreciate that. And commissioners appreciate it. I hope one of you finds a way to make sure the neighborhood councils get this information. Because there's a... People don't understand Metropolitan Water District and they don't understand L.A. DWP as well as they should. But there's been more outreach by Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And MWD does have a tremendous community outreach program, or they have and have always been out there. But it's important to get that education. Because people don't realize when they turn a tap where that water comes from and what it takes to make that water come here. It doesn't get manufactured. Water is a natural course. And all water is recycled. And I'll look at it, various methods to reuse water. Because when it rains today, it may come back, it may go down the drains and down the river in the ocean. But the next season, it will come up and be part of a cloud and come back again. It is a continual recycling. But education is so important for both the neighborhood councils and the business community. Because I think we're at a period of time where we've outgrown our knowledge as much as who built this city. The people who built this city, we're maholling in the others and all those workers who built it and all that great history that's back there. But it's so simple to turn a switch or flip a faucet and get water. That education is so important. Do you have any statements you want to make to the council on my time at all? Are you okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Padilla. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Before calling on the next speaker? All you folks in the back, last warning. If you can't take a seat, I'm going to ask you to take your conversations outside. Sergeants, if you can help with that. If folks can't find a seat, there's plenty of seats available. Please take your conversations outside. Mr. Wissad on this item, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you and congratulations to you all. I worked as a water attorney for about a year and a half when I caught the bug to run for office and I ran for the school board. But I wanted just to stand up and congratulate you, in particularly to Jesus Cuñones, who I had the pleasure of working with while I was a school board member. You represented several of our bargaining units there. And I found Mr. Cuñones to be a very thoughtful, intelligent, and a real problem solver. So I'm excited about your service on the Met and I look forward to working with you on the various issues that the city and the Met work on. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Got a chance to meet two of you, for sure. I threw out a question a couple of times. I'd like to hear it on the record here. The farmers. There are three issues I have with the farmers. One is not enough tiling to reclaim the water that they use. Number two, some crops like rice, when they should be in North and South Carolina. And number three, water rights are bought by entrepreneurs and then sold at dear. Can we look at the relationship between the farmers in the Central Valley and our water needs and the issues between the farmers and the urban dwellers? Anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. The, as we discussed in committee, I think at the moment, we're at a critical juncture in statewide water policy, given where a lot of statewide discussions with respect to the delta where we get most of our drinking water from and the whole configuration of how California will run its water policy. And I think that the city of Los Angeles and Southern California in particular has really led the state and perhaps the nation in water conservation, in urban water conservation. And not only do we need to redouble our efforts to make sure we're getting everything out of the water that we have, but also to work at the statewide level and to work with all of the interested parties, the environmental community, the farmers, the other urban water agencies, to ensure that the first response to water needs is to conserve water. Because that's going to be the cheapest and in a sense, the most reliable source of water for the state of California. So I think that it's important that the Los Angeles delegation to Met and Met in general presses that point and is very active in these statewide discussions about the future of California's water policy.
I appreciate that because the water wars of the past can't go forward, but the farmers have to be brought to the table and discuss it because water is scarce in Southern California. You alluded to the delta. There's concerns about the delta. There's concerns about ocean water on one level and then there's concerns about the dykes. We know what happened in New Orleans. Do we have any sense of what our policy will be with that?
Well, I think the discussions, that there will be discussions over the next year in Sacramento on the future of the delta and the fact that there are significant problems with water quality and with endangered species and with seawater intrusion and all of the issues, that people really need to come together and work out a solution. And I think there is momentum to try to get these issues raised and resolved and that we need to find ways to find coalitions with other cities, with other regions of the state, with the environmental community and with others to force a discussion that has us prioritize the use of water for its highest value and its highest use and to make sure that we insist that the rest of the state do the kinds of conservation we've done in Southern California to ensure that we have an adequate water supply for everyone in California and for Southern California in particular.
Well, I look forward to your leaderships on that. My third question has to do with storm water runoff. I mean, we do get rains here and it ends up going in the ocean. What kind of leadership will you provide to capture that water for two levels? One, letting it seep down into the aquifer where we seal it all up, be it the L.A. River that my colleague here has worked on, or some of the other areas where we can open up the dirt and let it go in? And secondly, how we can capture that water for drinkable opportunities?
Well, I think that's a very important issue. It's one that as we discussed, the L.A. River, Mr. Reyes's leadership, that we will look at opportunities to increase stormwater capture along the L.A. River but all over the city. And that's somewhere where the city agencies, the city departments, who are most interested in this have been talking about this. I think the other thing is that the city of Los Angeles, as part of Met, has found ways to create incentives for the member agencies of Met to look at these kinds of conservation options by preferential rates, things like that, that really encourage conservation. And again, I think we need to redouble our effort to make sure that the rate structures at Met give us the most incentive to do the kinds of things that are very important for the city. And that if we are willing to take the expense and the effort to increase stormwater capture, that that is a benefit for us as a Met member agency.
Well, I want to congratulate the mayor for his choice of candidates that are absolutely stellar. And I look forward to your leadership. And congratulations to the three of you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Other members wishing to speak on these items? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on confirmation. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
These are approved. Congratulations. Next item, please.
I believe Mr. Zein has a request.
Mr. Zein?
This is the council. One of my colleagues, the Plumb Chair, is going to be leaving. Item number 49, we need him here for that. If we could take that out of order, please.
Okay. How quickly is he leaving?
Pardon me?
Well, I'm happy to take it out of order after we finish consideration of commissioners.
Okay. I don't know what time he's leaving, but he's leaving now. If we could do that before he leaves, it's an important issue we do before the break.
Colleagues, it's up to the bodies. Is there any objection to taking item 49 out of order?
And I don't anticipate taking too long to discuss.
Shh. And colleagues, I'll remind all of us, this is the last council meeting for the calendar year. It's one of those days where 10 items are urgent and important and everything needs to go first. And then we have our district attorney here. Want to be respectful of his time. I believe he's here on behalf of one of our commission nominees. So if we can, Mr. Zein, allow Mr. Cooley to speak. We'll take up the item he's here on quickly. And then we'll come to item 49 and then the balance of the commissioners. Is that how that plan?
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay. So that is, I believe, item 21. Let's proceed to item 21. Mr. Cooley? If Ms. Mars can come forward and have a seat.
I'm here with the honor of ceremoniously swearing in Helen Mars, a dear friend to the Transportation Commission. I assume there's going to be a vote at some point. If not, I'm here to perform my duties as a constitutional officer, one of which is to swear people in with their oath of office. So I want to congratulate Helen for her years of service to good government at both the county and the city level.
Okay. Well, let's hear from some council members. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Ms. Grul, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zein, and Mr. Parks. And before we do that, let me just, for the record, say we do have a committee report recommending confirmation of Ms. Mars. And folks, we all know and love Helen. But we do have Mr. Reyes ready to leave on an item important to Mr. Zein that we're taking up next. So Bill, you're on.
Yeah. Hi, Helen. Good to see you here and it's great to see the distinguished DA here as well. Why do you want to go on this commission?
Why do I want to go on the commission?
Yeah.
Well, the last time I was on transportation, public transportation, was on the P car in East Los Angeles. But I do have a large, rather large company with more than 40 employees that do take public transportation. I know the problems and I know the issues from them. So I feel that I can be an asset and do a good job and help the city.
Well, you know, you're a great organizer and you're a great people person and you have great skills in community. And we need that. We need a mass transit infrastructure that we don't have in the city. I need the Expo line to the beach. I need the Red Line subway actually to happen. I need the Red Line subway actually to happen, and I need the Green Line going not only from the airport but coming up Lincoln Boulevard to the Expo line and going down into the South Bay. So I just want to congratulate you, and I look forward to your leadership on that commission.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bedea. We had the pleasure of Ms. Mars coming before our committee last week. It was unfortunate that that was the day we went until almost four-thirty here in the City Council, so I appreciated you waiting around there. Helen and I had a chance to meet the day of that committee meeting and talk about how important it was, transportation here in the city of Los Angeles. Helen is no stranger to the city family. She's been someone who's been committed to the civic life here, committed to making the city a better place, and I'm so enthusiastic that she is willing to spend the time and energy, in addition to running her business, to be on the Transportation Commission. We've talked about having a joint meeting of the commission and the city's committee, how important it is to have that linkage, to see how we can, not only, as Mr. Rosendahl talks about, the west side and getting to the beach from Expo line to the Wilshire bus line to hopefully someday a subway down the Wilshire corridor, but the expansion also in the San Fernando Valley to make that linkage and to make sure that people have a seamless transportation system. Because if it only goes a few areas or a couple of miles and you can't get there from your own home, that you have to drive to the station to get there, and then when you get off the station, you have to take another couple of buses. We really need to make it a system that is seamless. And Helen has, again, I think, the tenacity and is just really going to be a wonderful asset to the city. And I appreciate that the district attorney is here to support her and I think to hopefully swear her in as soon as this is completed to be here for that portion of it. But Helen, I just wanted to say thank you. We look forward to working with you. I know my colleagues all feel the same way. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, and I'm looking forward to working with you as chairman of the committee and being very, very successful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you, and I just want to join my colleagues in recommending Helen. I've had the pleasure of knowing Helen for a long time now, right? And I know you served us very well on the Civil Service Commission, and you're just a great organizer, as one of my colleagues pointed out, but also you're a very hard worker. I know you have a great love for the city of L.A., and I know you can do great on the Transportation Commission, because that's one that requires somebody to roll up their sleeves and get in there and help the department see through a lot of big issues that we are facing. And I know Helen's one of those big-issue type of people that really understands the big issues and will roll up her sleeves and really work hard. So I know your tradition of L.A., working with L.A. on numerous commissions, and you're going to be a great asset to us, and I'm just proud to be there to help you. And as a member of the committee, I'm still a member, at least for the moment. I don't know if I will be in January or not, Mr. President-elect, but if I am, tell me, we want to help you. We have a lot of big issues. I serve on the Southern California Regional Transportation Committee as well. So we have a lot of interregional issues that are before us, and I'd love to sit down with you and talk one of these nights over a bottle of wine, which I know you enjoy to do once in a while. We'll talk about some of those big issues. But she's going to be a great commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, be a great asset to the city of L.A. You already have been for a long time, and I look forward to working with you. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I appreciate that.
Anytime our district attorney shows up in council, we shudder. In this particular case, we applaud you to have the district attorney next to you supporting you for this. So I know you personally. I know Phil. Wonderful. I'm sure you do well on the commission, and it's good to see you here, Stephen. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Helen, thank you for coming forward and being a part of this commission. You've been a long-term resident of the city. Certainly, you have an understanding of the traffic issues. I'm just pleased that you mentioned the P car, because most people around here don't remember the P car. And I used to ride that car myself, along with the S car and a couple of others. But we are looking forward to you bringing your business sense to this, also your ability to get things done and really get down to the details of getting the city of Los Angeles moving in a variety of ways. We've had conversations about not just the big things, but also the small things, the residential neighborhoods, how do we interlink the railways and the bus systems, and really find a way in which people are not spending half their lives in their cars going east to west or north to south. So I just want to say thank you for coming forward. We're looking forward to working with you with the T Committee and your commission, and it's just a real pleasure to see someone of your quality come forward and want to put forth that volunteer time and effort.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks, also known as my brother. And if it wasn't for you, I probably would not be here today. And so I thank you very, very much.
Mr. Lavange.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mars. I thank you for serving the mayor of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles and your expertise, not as just a resident of the fourth district, but your expertise as a businesswoman in Los Angeles. Talk about, because of your business movement, not only the safety factors of all mobility and transportation, but also the business end of goods movement, of moving, I know, just similar trucks delivering from one end of the city to the other or one region of the county. I know your involvement professionally. Do you have any comment on that?
As I sit here, unless, I think I can do a good job, and I will do a great job on transportation when I think, I don't think of myself as the owner of California Lithgow Arts. I kind of think of myself as one of the employees. But as I sit here, I think about all the transportation we use, from employees using public transportation for trucking companies, messenger services, our own trucks. We have many trucks. So I believe I have some knowledge, and I've been very, very blessed and have a successful company.
Well, I know you have great knowledge, and you're very practical and you're very focused and driven, which was a great addition to this commission, which is so important to have it. And I see you have the great district attorney for Los Angeles County here, also a fourth district representative. This morning, Mr. DA, we had a press conference with Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston and Mr. Garcetti and myself to discuss the tragedy of hit-and-run accidents in this city and the impact. There are sixty-one hundred hit-and-run accidents in the city of Los Angeles. Over ten of them have been fatal hit-and-run accidents. A crime that the police department is looking for the public's help. But traffic is all important. And if I could right now, because I think it's the last meeting of the year, ask the audience here to raise your hand if you've been a victim of crime in Los Angeles in the last year. Helen, look at this. Anybody been a victim of crime? Raise your hand. Raise your hand if you're a victim of crime. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven people last year. How many people were impacted by traffic in Los Angeles last 24 hours? Raise your hand. They raised their hand. Look at that, Helen, right there. All the people, the impact. So you have a great role. I just wanted to compliment you on your service to the city. You've been one of the great residents of this city. You have a great husband, who's also a wonderful asset, because the partnership it takes often to be able to contribute to the city. So, Mr. Burrell, thank you for your support of your great wife, Helen Mars. Mr. DA, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. Are there members wishing to speak? Seeing none. My last question, Helen, is, is there any truth to the rumor that Steve is here, in case anybody votes no?
I didn't give that much thought, and there was no discussion about it, but I'd like to clarify that Steve Cooley, the district attorney of L.A. County, is not here as my attorney today. He is here as one of my closest friends, and I thank him so much for taking the time. Not everybody is so blessed. Thank you, Steve.
We understand that. Let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I also would like to thank Mayor Villarreal for giving me this opportunity, and again, Councilmember Bernard Parks, and I guess Jan Perry. She is here. I want to thank her for giving me all the help over the years to be able to come to this point in life where I can contribute and do some time for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Before proceeding to the next item, colleagues, this is item forty-nine, called special by Mr. Zine. But before we take it up, sorry to do this, but sergeants, I'm going to have to insist, we're going to stop the meeting until we have our aisleways cleared. Folks who are here, either please take a seat, or I'm asking the sergeants to escort you outside of chambers. All you in the back, standing around, either take a seat or take the conversations out of chambers.
No, don't. No. If you can. I think it's okay.
And happy holidays while we're at it. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number forty-nine, my colleague needs to go to another meeting. I'm going to start it out with Councilmember Ed Reyes, plum chair. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. Colleagues, I apologize, I have a meeting with the Water District Board, but the bottom line is, Councilmember Zine has taken the initiative to look at the issue of Warner Center in such a way where his attempt to change the conditions is to essentially establish the first step that deals not only with Warner Center and the notion of housing, but housing in such a way where the employee base, the people that work in Warner Center can actually afford to live there. It's a dramatic step in that he is looking at the bigger picture. How do we get people off the freeways? How do we get them off the streets? Well, the best thing to do is put our jobs close to our housing. Nothing new, not rocket science. Jobs-housing balance is the goal. Mrs. Zine has put forth recommendations on a motion that should be on your desk. It essentially creates the criteria by which affordable workforce housing could be made available, so the clerk, the person who's at the door, the folks who clean the Warner Center, the folks who attend to you as customers can actually live in the area. This is all he's trying to do. It's something that we need to do as a city. I applaud him for his courage. I know there's a lot of pressure not to do it because of all the market forces that exist, but bottom line, colleagues, we should support this type of effort. We have our findings. He's been very, very diligent, did his research, actually assessed and profiled the purchasing power, the buying power, the income groups that are in Warner Center. And all he's trying to do is establish the potential, the capacity, the ability, the accessibility for housing in Warner Center. So I encourage an eye vote, and again, I ask for your support in Councilmember Zine's effort to create housing for everyone in the valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Garcetti. You'd like to speak next, Mr. Zine? I don't have your button pushed, so we'll go ahead.
Well, if I can just give a little outline to this, and then my colleagues will support. I don't want to drag this on for a long time. We discussed this for a long time with the developers in the community, with the Woodland Hills folks. The bottom line is, as Councilmember Reyes has said, is Warner Center was designed to be a job-housing balance area. We have jobs, we have housing, we have this connection where people can live and work in the same community, so they don't have to travel great distances, as we see happily now on the 101 freeway. Currently, there is a workforce of about forty-two thousand people in Warner Center, forty-two thousand working in Warner Center, and only about nine thousand people living there. They would have a higher number living there in the three thousand units that we have or have proposed if it weren't for the extreme cost of the rents. Income levels, more than fifty-five percent of the employees that work at Warner Center are below the 120% of median income of L.A. County, which is $55,100. Only 12% earn more than 150% of median income. Approximately 30% to 35% of the workers in Warner Center would qualify as low-income with $36,700 as their annual salary. A firefighter, police officer are below 120% of median income in L.A. County. So that means our public safety personnel would not be able to afford. Teachers, nurses would not be able to afford living in Warner Center. Entry-level clerk for the city of Los Angeles would qualify as low-income at their current salary. The cheapest rent in Warner Center for a one-bedroom apartment is $1,600. Person would have to earn income of $57,600 just to afford a one-bedroom apartment. The number one reason employers say that more employees do not live in Warner Center is because of affordability. And the Warner Center-specific plan was designed to provide this job-housing balance and reduce traffic and create an urban village that the people could enjoy. Approximately 20% of the people that live in Warner Center work in Warner Center at this time. There needs to be more housing for the workforce in Warner Center. We know about the traffic congestion. We know about the situation of extreme rents, extreme costs in Warner Center. We did a survey, different apartments, Lombardi Apartments, Avondale Apartments, Warner Pines, Oakwood, Bella Vista, Summit at Warner Ridge, and they're all the same. The one-bedroom apartments are $1,600, $1,900, $1,200, $1,300. So what we're looking for with this procedure that is going to give us a period of time where we can come up with a new specific plan for Warner Center, and it's going to take approximately two years, according to the Planning Department, is provide this limited control ordinance, so any development that takes place will have conditions. And the issue that developers are opposed to is the number of availability that we want to have affordable for the working force. Again, Warner Center was designed to be a working force community. And I'll just mention this. I was in Compton a couple nights ago, working my LAPD assignment, and noticed a house for sale in Compton. And it was a house that was two bedrooms, one bath, 6,900 square foot, a lot size, $390,000 for a house in Compton. What we're looking at is affordability. We're looking for the working folks of our community in the San Fernando Valley and for all the city of Los Angeles. We need to have workforce housing. This control ordinance that will be in effect for approximately two years will provide that. In the meantime, we can come up with a specific plan for Warner Center, since it's been designed a couple of times, and it's outpaced itself with the residential growth. Warner Center will remain a balance between jobs and housing. It will not just be a housing community. They will have the job component. So I ask my colleagues to support this. We worked a lot, spent a lot of time dealing with this, met with the homeowners, met with the developers, and I will be candid by saying the developers don't want this. What they want is market-rate housing. Market-rate housing takes the public safety personnel, takes the working class out of the affordability in Warner Center, which in fact then puts them on the freeways, causing more congestion. I thank you, Madam President, and I encourage your support for this measure that we are bringing forward today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We have Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Zine, I just rise in support of you today. I want to commend you on you and your staff's work in terms of making sure that all parts of the city have housing that hits all people, not just those at the very highest end of the economic spectrum, but those who are working just as hard in the middle and at the lower ends of the spectrum. It's a $30 wage now that people have to earn an hour in order to afford an average one-bedroom apartment in Los Angeles. People need to earn about $130,000 to buy the median home in Los Angeles. So this is a crisis that is hitting everybody, and the reason we have traffic is when we don't allow people who are some of the workers where the jobs are to live close to those jobs. And I know that your leadership today will ensure that folks who are working in Warner Center can live near Warner Center. That's a good thing for everybody out there in the West Valley, because that means less traffic. That means people not coming from the city center, having to drive 50 miles to get to where you are. That means that people won't necessarily clog our roads. And so I just rise with the strongest support and want to let the developers know and the folks that are looking out there that we support Mr. Zine in this and will continue to as you develop the specific plan for the area, but this ICO is a great solution in the meantime. So congratulations.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Mr. Zine, you're getting all the praise, and you're going to get some from me right now, because you deserve it. You know, mixed use is the name of the game going forward. In my district, we're losing our middle class. The Ellis Act allows people to say they're getting out of the rental business. They bulldoze them down and build high-end condos. It's happening throughout the city. And wherever we can create new housing that a certain percentage is affordable, we must do this as city policy. And this is a great expression of city policy to protect all of us as we go forward with housing. So hats off to you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. That item is now before us. No other colleagues wish to speak, so we will have that item before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item's been approved.
And that is amended.
Yes. Ms. Perry would like to move, ask that we reconsider item number forty-five. Okay, Ms. Perry is standing in Mr. Zine's seat, so thank you. Ms. Perry will move, and Mr. Zine will second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item's been reconsidered. We'll call it special, or did you have in mind?
Call it special, please.
Call it special, then. Thank you. Next item of business. I think we're going back to commissioners.
Yes, that would be item number nineteen, and that's confirmation of Mr. Sergio Seiderman to the Taxi Cab, Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If I was sitting down there, I'd speak a lot, but as chair, it's a little more difficult. I just want to thank you. You came before our committee and Transportation Committee. We have an opportunity to work very closely on the taxi cab issue. So thank you for your willingness to serve. Would you like to say a few words before we have a vote on this item?
I just appreciate the opportunity. You're all instilling in me, and I look forward to serving the city of Los Angeles.
Great. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Zine.
Thank you, briefly. Have you ever ridden a taxi in Los Angeles?
Many times.
Okay. You know we have a lot of banded taxis in Los Angeles.
That's right.
And we need to seriously address that issue. I've been out with the taxi enforcement folks. They're very frustrated, the enforcement branch of the Department of Transportation. They don't think they're getting the support, and we have citizens who are being victimized by the banded taxi cabs, the ones that don't have the seal on the door, that rip them off the commuters, the consumers. So I urge you to pay some attention to that. So I just want to bring that to your attention and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We look forward to your being very active on that commission. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
You've been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item.
The next item, Madam President, it's Commissioner, but it is from the special meeting. Do you wish to recess this meeting and go back to the special meeting?
That would be great. Thank you very much.
And that item is confirmation of Ms. Estella Lopez to the L.A. Homeless Services Authority.
Ms. Lopez, if you could join us at the middle table, please. I know Ms. Perry, although she has not pushed her button, is going to, so Ms. Perry.
Estella, you know what you're in for. You sure you want to do this?
Most definitely.
Would you tell the folks listening a little bit about the monthly exercises and walks that we take and what it teaches people?
I'd be delighted, Councilwoman. Starting in July, the Central City East Association, of which I'm the executive director, began to take stakeholders from downtown through Skid Row first Wednesday of every month. We continue to do that every month. The groups have grown to include not only downtown stakeholders, but in fact, many of you here at council accompanied us on the walks through Skid Row. It is the only way, I believe, that you can actually understand the misery, the torment, and the death that goes on there every single day and every night. My office is there, I see it every day, and I work very, very hard to bring it to the attention of as many as I can because unfortunately, we've heard about people living on the sidewalks of downtown Los Angeles, and they're not. People are dying on the sidewalks of downtown Los Angeles, and that needs to change.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Housing Committee, Eric Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And Ms. Lopez, thank you for putting yourself forward. Very excited, and I wanted to speak from the perspective of the committee that we unanimously supported your nomination. Enjoy the conversation. I know you take no prisoners, and that's the kind of leadership that we're going to need. And I really hope that as we look at, and you articulated some of the areas in particular that you want to focus on, that we really look at LSA not only as a body that needs to clean up in terms of its administration, but also in terms of its policy ideas. It needs that leadership from all of us who oversee it, but the day-to-day leadership that you can provide as a commissioner of really emphasizing solutions that work. In my opinion, I know many people around here, those housing-first solutions that put together supportive housing, not just shelters, not just services, not just housing without services, but all of them together in permanent housing. We will fight the battles for the dollars from Washington, the dollars from Sacramento, and even generating the dollars here to house people. We want you to provide that leadership inside LSA to let us know what that plan would look like and how we spread that throughout the city. When we declared a state of emergency here on homelessness, everybody in this horseshoe recognized that and said that I will bear my burden. Each one of us did. When it comes down to specific projects, we want to make sure they're done right and have a high bar. But we hope and we know that you will be a voice to say downtown is shouldering its burden, will continue to do its share, but that all of us need to do that too. So I want to thank you and just put that out there as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenthal.
Good to be with you, Estella. The mayor once again shows his genius by bringing a mixed group to the board. We had some controversy, some of my colleagues did, over some of the other appointments, but everybody now is in the room that can really look at it from various angles. Philosophically speaking, what do you see as the overall solution to this problem of homelessness?
Certainly, sir. I'm not an expert on homelessness. I'm learning more every day. I'm not an expert on mental illness, but I will tell you, I am an expert and I speak with authority about the conditions on Skid Row and what we need there is a balance. The political discourse, the media attention of late has focused a great light on the situation. But unfortunately, much of the discussion is based on the need for housing and mental illness treatment and drug treatment alone. And what I am convinced is needed is another element to work in concert with those, not exclusive with those, but in concert with them, and that's law enforcement. We have a situation out there where people who cannot make a decision for themselves are being fed drugs 24 hours a day. These people are being sent further and further down into torment.
Hold my time.
And they're dying. They're dying either violently, they're dying because of their addiction, or they're dying due to infectious disease. Unless we get the purveyors of death off the street, unless we have more police resources, not against the homeless, but against the drug dealers that are keeping them in their misery, then the drug treatment and the housing options that are available for people and that you're all fighting so hard to provide are not going to have the intended result. We need a balanced approach.
Do you see the caseworkers going to the street and working with the homeless and talking them into going into assisted living, going into institutionalization?
There are many people, many good people, many good programs out there on the streets already, but they are outnumbered by the temptations that are on that street. On my most recent walk through Skid Row, I spoke to people in the tents, living in the encampments. I had, I was lucky enough to be accompanied by two vans so that I could offer people to come inside that same night. And overwhelmingly, people stayed out on the street. They told me that they already had rooms or that they preferred to stay on the street. And when I asked them why, they said because they wanted to party with their friends. That's a very, that's an enormous challenge for an outreach worker, and it takes years sometimes to convince people, as Steve Lopez's column has shown, it takes years to convince people to take advantage of treatment and housing. We don't have a way to compel people to come off the streets right now. It's a very sad situation.
We all applaud Steve Lopez. I might tell you, he's a good storyteller and he's put a lot of light on an issue that needs to have light on it, and it's been amazing. It's a column I always look forward to reading. Last night, I was with the Pacific Division Police, the Beach Detail. We spent a couple of hours talking about the homeless. I have an encampment also on Venice Beach. So I look forward to your overall leadership on the commission, and congratulations for accepting the position.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I saw you in your boa a couple days ago.
Oh, my goodness.
You're dressed up like the Christmas tree.
Thank you.
Very festive. The situation you obviously know about, you represent the East Central...
Central City East Association.
Which deals with that situation on daily basis.
Those are the property owners and the business owners that live with that situation every day.
So you are very sensitive to the issue, how it negatively impacts the community, the city, the individuals involved?
Every day, sir, because these are the folks who assess themselves to pay for two business improvement districts that provide services to the area. And by that, I don't mean just to the businesses and to the property owners. Our security teams and our maintenance teams are out there every day, in fact, serving everyone. Yesterday, or Monday afternoon, rather, one of the deaths that was on Skid Row was discovered by one of our personnel out on the street, and we tried to give that gentleman some aid, and it was unfortunately too late. But yes, I know very well the concerns of the business community, and remember too, Councilman, that the business community represents jobs. The jobs that are located in Central City East are held by the working poor of downtown Los Angeles, people who get there by bus, people who need those jobs to put a roof over their head and food on their table and to provide for their families. We must preserve the jobs and the businesses in that area.
What I like about your approach is the real approach. You're not in the fluffy world, and there's been some controversial appointments, which I voted against too in particular on this particular commission because I didn't think they had the insight and the experience to really deal with it, to make some significant changes. There's a $45 to $60 million budget that is appropriated annually for that, and there's a tremendous amount of money that may be wasted that needs to be put to good use to help resolve the problem because it puts a negative mark on the city, not only the business community of downtown Los Angeles, but the entire city, and it doesn't show a lot of compassion for our human beings. So I highly support you on this. You're a grassroots person who knows it from the street level, and I'm sure that your inclusion on the commission may be frustrating for you at times, but I will be in your court supporting you when it comes up to the real issues and how we can resolve those real issues. So congratulations and thank you for coming on board to help improve the city, in particular that area of Los Angeles.
I'm honored, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Weiser.
Thank you, and I'm excited about your appointment to this because you're there every day. It's almost the same sentiment that Councilmember Zine expressed, which is you're very, very familiar with the issues there. I know, as, when I was in high school, I worked at a video store nearby and walked those streets every day, and it really leaves a mark on you when you're exposed to it and not just come to it once in a while. But with the new renewed focus on it, with people talking about it all the time, I think we're going to begin to address some of these toughest issues, and many people think they're intractable and unsolvable, but they are. And also, in the few times I've met with you to talk about this, I see in you a huge advocate, and that's what this issue needs, an advocate to resolve this issue and the passion you bring to it. So I'm excited about your appointment, and I look forward to working with you. My district covers a lot of the area that we're talking about, so I look forward to working on this issue that many people think is unsolvable, but it needs to at least at this immediate time be alleviated because what we have right now is unacceptable. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Estella, just wanted to add my congratulations. You and I have had the pleasure of working with one another since you ran the bid down there on Broadway, and your experience and knowledge base about what's happening in the community on the issue of homelessness. I had the pleasure of going with you and Ms. Perry and many of my colleagues to take that walk just a few weeks ago in Skid Row. So thank you for your commitment. It's a big challenge, so.
My pleasure.
Items now before us, colleagues. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
That has been, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Ray, before we do that, I apologize. Tyrone Ray wanted to say a few words. I apologize, Mr. Ray. Public comment.
You feel a little bit disruptive to remind you. My name is Tyrone Roy. I'm on the Blue Ribbon Committee in Homelessness and was on the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority Advisory Board, and I've been affiliated with LSA for about five years now. And I welcome Ms. Lopez. We need some new blood and some innovative ideas. But one thing that I wanted to say was that I noticed that most of the time you people are focused on downtown Los Angeles. Downtown Los Angeles, according to the reports from LSA, contains 11,000 people, but the total homeless count is 91,000 people. And I thought that it was important to mention that there are 80,000 people that you're not discussing. You're talking about solving the problem because of the concentration, appearance of concentration downtown, when there are 80 other thousand people that needs to be looked at. One thing that I've been looking at from the records here is that they, one thing I'd like to mention, there's a lot of things, is mental illness. I understand that there's a focus on mental illness, and you need to really look at this focus on mental illness because mental illness contains about one-third of all homeless people. The other third approximately is substance abuse. That means one-third of the people are able-bodied people who can, if trained, afford this workforce housing, and that would be 30,000 people now eliminated rather quickly, quicker than the mental illness and the substance abuse from homelessness. That's a sizable dent in homelessness. And I have some records here from, I requested from the request for public records that indicate that in vocational training, it has zero. None of these people that are going into the shelter system have vocational training. I'm sure there must be some mistake there, of course, that nobody has an education beyond 40% 12th grade. It goes down, the numbers go down as they enter elementary school, and they also dramatically go down when you go into four-year college. So these people who are able-bodied can be immediately removed from their roles of homelessness if they're allowed to develop a vocation, whereas they can afford this workforce housing that Mr. Zine and Mr. Rosenthal spoke of, rather than just, but anyway, I just thought I would try to expand your view, that they're not just the people downtown, there are 80,000 out there that you're not addressing.
Thank you, Tyrone. I really appreciate you being here. I know you've come, and all the commissioners have been for LSA in their comments. I'd like to also acknowledge Charlie Wu.
Good morning, Charlie Wu, property owner in the Central City East area. Thank you. I'm a founder and former Chair of the Central City East Association. I come here today to thank the mayor and city council for appointing our executive director, Estella Lopez, to the Homeless Services Authority. The stakeholders in Central City East, including property owners, businesses, and thousands of hard-working employees have long suffered and shoulder disproportionate burden of the ills of the homelessness, and we want to be a part of the solution. We want to have a seat at the table, and we are very excited we have that voice in Estella Lopez. As we all know, Estella has shown her energy and commitment and day-to-day knowledge to this issue. In addition, some of you might have known that she have had a long distinguished record of bringing out, bringing together that diverse community in Los Angeles to reach out to the diverse interests in downtown, to promote downtown to a place to work and live. And then we are here to support her, and then we look forward to working with the city on dealing with this difficult problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Appreciate you being here today. Madam Clerk, we can open the roll on this appointment. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Congratulations to Estella.
Thank you.
Colleagues, item 49, Mr. Zine has asked for us to open. We're still in the special meeting, so we will adjourn the special meeting and go back to item, to recess, excuse me, recess. Yes, then we'll come back to item number seven.
If I can briefly explain, there were cards submitted that oversight. I'm not asking for any change in what we did, but to give a courtesy to those who came down and listen to them, Madam, if we can do it, I think there was five cards or four cards or six cards or something, if we can do it in...
There are six cards.
If we can have, say, 10 minutes on the clock, five minutes on the clock, half minutes on the clock, and listen so we can move forward with that. Thank you for that courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. So to be able to open, public comment, and again, I think because no one had asked for public comment, we did not have public comment at the time of the cards were here, so we appreciate your interest in doing that. What we're going to do is recess the special meeting, go back to the regularly scheduled meeting. We will ask for reconsideration of this item to be able to allow for public comment. So Madam Clerk, open the roll for reconsideration on item number 49. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
That item is now back before us. If I could have the following individuals scheduled to speak, Lawrence Scott, John Bowman, Bob Burke, looks like we have Lawrence Scott again, William Delvack, and Tom McCarty. And probably if you all come line up, that will help save your time there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your attention to this matter this afternoon. I represent Avalon Bay Communities. We are a substantial property owner in the Warner Center area, as well as a major provider of rental housing in Los Angeles. We've been working with the council office and the Planning Department for the better part of eight months, structuring the motion that's in front of you today. We actually spent a lot of time and effort putting together a well-balanced mix of workforce housing inclusion to support the creation of rental housing and for-sale housing in the Warner Center-specific plan. I'm before you today to express the concern, not over the inclusion of workforce housing per se, but the percentage that was brought before you in the last couple of weeks here, which has increased substantially over the levels that were approved at the Planning Commission and Plum levels. We thought, along with our consortium of property owners, the Neighborhood Council, that we had put together a percentage workforce housing that was a win-win situation for both the industry as well as the city, and that's now been modified to what's before you, which we're concerned that will have an impact that will deter housing creation in the Warner Center-specific plan. So the ultimate goal of providing housing next to jobs will be detrimentally impacted if you approve the percentages that you're talking about that are before you today of 25% and 120% median. We... about that are before you today of 25% and 120% median. We would request that you reconsider the percentages that were approved at the planning commission level and the Plum level as being reasonable and fair to both sides in creating a win-win. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Bob Burke, and I'm here this morning representing two very interested participants in this Warner Center process, Greg Lennox, the president of the Warner Center Association, and Morgan Group. And we're here to say that we support wholeheartedly Councilmember Zine's efforts to develop an affordable place in Warner Center where the workforce can find housing at a cost that they can afford and that we can reduce the ongoing transportation congestion and problems that this part of the city is facing. However, we do feel that there may be problems down the road with the implementation of the figures of the motion as indicated this morning. We'd like to work with the city attorney, the planning department, members of the transportation department, and others to see that the plan as finally coming out of the pipeline at the end is one that truly reflects the needs of the community and that we can all go forward and use this as a model for the rest of the city. Thank you.
Honorable Councilmembers, William Delvac, on behalf of Avalon Bay Communities. Avalon Bay and other developers strongly support the idea of workforce housing. The difficulty here is in the details. As amended today, the proposal will no longer be workforce housing, but in fact will be inconsistent with the city's other areas of workforce housing. Indeed, what's being proposed today is regular affordable housing, low-income housing. That's a worthy goal, but it is not the same goal as workforce housing. We've submitted a letter for the record of six specific concerns. I just highlight several of them, and we'd ask you to consult the Housing Department, the Planning Department, and the City Attorney on these. There is nothing in the record to demonstrate a nexus between the amendment and the need for workforce housing or the development of market rate housing. This is inconsistent with the 175% of area median income the city is using in other areas. There was no testimony at Plum or Planning Commission, and there is no evidence in the record regarding this particular proposal. In fact, the only evidence in the record is that such a proposal would create a disincentive for the development of housing. And then finally, we would just suggest that the city's own data regarding firefighters in particular demonstrate the public service employees would not even be eligible under the constraints under the amendment. We would ask you to consult with the experts in the city at the Housing Department and Planning Department and the City Attorney regarding the difficulties with the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. McCarty.
Good morning, Madam President. My name is Tom McCarty. I am a land use consultant, and in this case, I am wearing my Valley Industry and Commerce Association hat. I passed out copies of a position paper that we took, which would put us at odds with this proposed legislation, and we would ask that it be reconsidered, echoing many of the comments that preceded me. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. I'll acknowledge Mr. Zine.
Thank you, and I thank those that have spoken. I find it interesting that the residents are not here. It's the developers, and I don't have disrespect for developers, but developers are in business to make money. They're in business to build a project, make money, and go back home. Well, the people who live in the community have to deal with the traffic, the congestion, the chaos, and I have to represent those people that live in the community. When we talk about percentages, we're looking at 25%. In a 100-unit apartment building, 25% would be affordable for the workforce, for the people that we're talking about. 75% will be at market rate, which means $2,000, $2,500 a month for the rent. So we're not asking anything unreasonable. Originally, the plan was we would have 10% and it would graduate to 25%. We're looking at 25% across the board to make it fair, and if a builder is building 500 units, or 400 units, or 300 units, if they can't show some compassion for the working class of society, that's a sad commentary on our society. So they need to give back a little bit. They're going to make their profit. Warner Center is designed for a workforce housing. This accomplishes that, and we will work with the developers. When it comes to the specific plan, we will include it, but I am not going to just roll over to developers' will to build at market rate and disenfranchise the working class of society that have to travel on our roads and spend a lot of gasoline to get to work. The people that work at Sears, the people that work at Maggiano's, the people that work at the restaurants in that area should have affordable residence to live. This isn't a single-family house. This is an apartment or a condominium, and when you're looking at these extreme rents, it's outrageous that they want to make them higher and not have any compassion for the working class of society. So I ask that we continue the vote that we had previously. I will work with the developers on the specific plan that will take place, but this ICO is not going to put anyone out of business. If anything, this can send a message that this council has compassion for human beings, to give them a place that they can live in comfort and convenience with a proper rent and not have to take half of your income and pay for rent that is exorbitant at this particular time in many parts of the city. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, do we need to vote on this item again at this point in time?
Yes, because it was reconsidered.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item has been approved. Madam Clerk, we'd like to, I think, reconsider item number 71, recognize if we could, Mr. Padilla.
Well, if we could reconsider it for a technical amendment.
Thank you. We have that reconsidered. Madam Clerk, open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is now before us.
Thank you, and Madam Chair, just want to ask for an amendment to this item to be retroactive to the date of the CLE's appointment, not today's date, but retroactive to the date that he was confirmed as a permanent CLE.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I know we'd like to recess the regular agenda and go to the special agenda and recognize Mr. Padilla for item number seven.
Item seven of the special agenda was actually called special by Mr. Parks, but I think we might have figured out a way to move forward here. I'll defer to him first.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Basically, colleagues, what we'd like to do is that Mr. Padilla is asking, on a very important project, that a Phase One environmental assessment be done and a Class A appraisal, which will run about $13,000, and we believe that that should go forward, but that the project, in the sense of looking at this fire station, should go to at least public safety and finance for any issues that go beyond that. And I believe the CAO is recommending a number of departments report on it, and so I think that would be the fair thing, to get these assessments done, but move forward and put it in committees.
That's more than okay. Obviously, we just need the initial cost covered upfront, the environmental review, that sort of thing, appraisal of the property. If all goes well, then we will have the bigger questions to answer: construction costs, land acquisition costs, ongoing operation, et cetera. So that's more appropriate for those questions to be referred back to public safety and budget. With that bifurcation, would ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. That item is now before us, amended with that bifurcation. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anything else in the special agenda?
No, that would conclude the special, the first special meeting. So if council wants to adjourn that, that would be appropriate.
We will adjourn the special meeting and go back to our regular meeting.
The first item called special in the regular meeting is item number 24, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
Councilmember Han. Councilmember Han, item number 24.
Oh, thank you. Item 24, pipeline franchises. Colleagues, I think this, obviously, I think this is a good way to distribute the pipeline franchise fees that come to the city of Los Angeles. And I have long held the belief that there are certain, that while it's nice to divide everything by 15, most of the times, there are parts of this city that are unduly burdened by some infrastructure issues, mainly pipelines. And this is a way to sort of redistribute our pipeline franchise fees that come to the city of Los Angeles. And to explain it as clearly as I think I can, what this does is redirects the franchise fees that come to the city, giving 50% to our general fund, then 25% gets split evenly among all council districts, and then 25% gets distributed proportionally based on how many pipelines run through that particular council district. In my opinion, this is the first time we've actually taken a look at distributing these fees in a just and fair manner. And the funds that will be distributed to certain council districts are going to communities, in my opinion, that bear the burden of pipelines running under their streets. These communities experience more streets being torn up. They require more maintenance. They experience traffic jams due to pipeline-related construction. Not to mention, they live constantly with the knowledge that, you know, houses and schools are built on pipelines. There is an issue going on right now in my community of Wilmington, where the school district is going to, trying to take homes from a historic neighborhood in Wilmington, because all the sites they've looked at in Wilmington, guess what, are on a pipeline. This is a community that's, you know, grown up over a string of pipelines. These funds that come to us in our council district funds can be used for sidewalk, street improvements, infrastructure, and, you know, I will tell Wilmington right now, if they're listening or they're watching, that I intend to just to give back the majority of the funds that come to my council district through these pipeline franchise fees to the community of Wilmington. Every street and neighborhood in that community is affected by underground pipelines, and I plan to use this money for projects like sidewalks, street repairs, slurry ceiling, median landscapes, crosswalks, and the Wilmington Neighborhood Council is working with me to identify projects where this money can be used to really mitigate years of a community that has suffered unduly due to the pipelines, again, because of their relationship to the Port of Los Angeles. And these pipelines connect the Port of Los Angeles really with the rest of the city. I really want to thank Bernard Parks, who really worked on this issue long and hard, and came up with, I think, a fair way to distribute these franchise fees to all, to the general fund, to council members, but finding some way that we can compensate neighborhoods that have really lived with the constant burden of having a community lined with pipelines. So Bernard, thank you. It was a lot of work. It was a lot of compromising. I wanted all the money to come to the 15th District. That's where I started. So you've come with a very, a very good compromise, and I think will benefit people in this city. And I think it will make people in Los Angeles realize that we look at how we might mitigate years of troublesome areas in the city, and I want to thank you for working on this compromise. Colleagues, I hope you will support it. It's been a lot of work, a lot of number-crunching to make this formula before us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
Stand up and again, follow Ms. Han and thank her. I remember her early discussions when we used to sit next to each other at the time, and now things have changed. But also, I want to thank the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Parks, because I know he looked at this and worked real hard on it. It does a justifiable result, so I want to thank you again, Ms. Han and Mr. Parks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. That item, I know we've had lots of conversations about that, Mr. Parks, in committee, various committees as well, and Ms. Han. So I think a good compromise was reached. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Item number 25, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, and I think then Mr. Padilla, who's sitting on this side.
Madam Chair, I would ask, as we've talked about this issue at the last meeting, I think you have about five cards that we reopen the public hearing, because a number of the businesspeople and grocers that are impacted by this were not able to be here, and I'd ask if it's possible that we have 15 minutes for them to come up and be able to at least express their specific issues as relates to this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Seeing I don't want against that item, we will have public comment. I'd like to call the following individuals up for public comment: Peter Larkin, Bill Coote, Luis Delamata, Jerome Lloyd, and I'll call the remainder after that.
Good morning. My name is Peter Larkin. I am president of the California Grocers Association. We represent over 500 retail grocers that operate over 6,000 grocery stores in the state of California, from the largest chains to the smallest independents and the wholesale grocers who serve them. I've also been asked today to represent the views of the California Retailers Association, also a statewide trade association made up of department stores, mass merchants, supermarkets, chain drugstores, and others. The CRA has submitted a letter for your consideration. Once again, we ask that you vote no on the grocery worker retention ordinance. I do want to thank you for allowing us the additional time to come back today. We do have several grocers who are here, and they wish to express their views directly to you, so I will be very brief. But I just want to outline a few major reasons why we remain opposed to the ordinance as it is written. First and foremost is the purpose of the ordinance. I believe the ordinance states that the ordinance is supposed to be protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Los Angeles. We fail to see how the ordinance actually accomplishes that goal. I think you will hear from some of the grocers today that they agree. We do not understand how this ordinance will accomplish that objective. Secondly, there are several very serious legal issues with the way the ordinance has been drafted. Our legal counsel has now had one week to review the draft. It has provided a letter. It is attached to the letter that I submitted to you earlier today, which goes into more detail about the legal concerns and the way that this ordinance was drafted. But we do think it is flawed. We do think it conflicts with state and federal law, and in the opinion of our legal counsel, it is certainly subject to legal challenge. Third, last week, there was quite a bit of discussion about how this would not impose any hardship on our members. I am here to state that 90 days, 60 days, 30 days of retaining these employees would indeed create a major hardship on our employers, our grocers, for many, many reasons. But the first of which is when you open the grocery store, when you open it as the new owner, those first 30, 60, 90 days are some of the most important days in terms of trying to tell the consumer who you are, what you do, and what you stand for, what kind of a grocery store you're going to be. And frankly, you need your own people to be able to present those products and services in the way that you have learned how to do them over the years operating your other stores. Fourth, there are so many unanswered questions. I do not have time to go into them all today, but there are many, many questions about the way that this would be implemented, and when it would apply and when it would not apply. Those remain unanswered, and I believe we need more time to understand just what the implications are of those unanswered questions. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Bill Cody, and I'm the chief financial officer for Superior Super Warehouse. Superior is a minority-owned independent grocery store company that currently has 24 stores in the greater Los Angeles area. Company stores have served the inner-city communities for more than 25 years. Superior employs approximately 4,000 people that are hired from within the communities that we serve. In regards to the grocery worker retention ordinance, Superior is asking the council to vote no on this matter. Superior's business method is to partner with the community that it serves by investing significantly in the store that the company acquires, to hire its employees from within the community, and to provide extensive training to its employees on company policies and procedures, and on health and safety practices before it opens. On the matter of health and safety, it is difficult to understand how retaining employees from an underperforming store from another grocery company would be advantageous over a successful independent grocer's business method of training and developing its employees. It is also difficult to understand how retaining employees and health and safety practices from an underperforming store improves the safety of Los Angeles. from an underperforming store improves the safety of Los Angeles communities. Additionally, as mentioned earlier, Superior makes a significant investment into its stores by remodeling the store to the superior floor layout, and to ensure that the store does not resemble the business that has failed before. Currently, the store remodel process takes around six months to one year to complete construction and to pass building codes. It is unclear what would be required regarding the retention of employees during this period. The cost and burden of retention could be significant and preventative for an independent grocer operator such as Superior to acquire a former grocery store. It would create a non-competitive business situation where potentially large chain store operators could exit the marketplace, and independent grocery store operators would find it too burdensome to enter the marketplace and to compete for the consumer's business. Again, I ask for your no vote on this ordinance, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Luis Del Amata. I represent Unified Western Grocers, and we represent the majority of the independent grocers in Southern California as well as the rest of the West Coast. I'm wearing a tie, but I'm certainly not a suit. I come from the trenches just like all of you, and I know President Padi, I know several of you council members who have worked with me on several other issues, and I do want to thank you. Everything has been always very positive as we work with you down in the different districts. Certainly, we represent all of them, and beyond our 600 or so retailers that we at Unified Western Grocers represent, some of them union, some of them non-union, I have to bring out and to your attention that we do require, as LA is a very diverse and multi-ethnic area, we do require specialized employees out there. We do have unique characteristics that would be at risk if we are forced to accept some untrained employees or some employees that are not really typical of the communities to which we serve. It is no secret to all of you that the retailers, the independent retailers continue growing in this area. We're looking, just if you take the Hispanic segment, for example, 80 percent of our sales come from Hispanic sales in Southern California, and yes, they are the general market right now. Yes, they do require unique and specialized skills, and not just the language per se. Yes, we do need some specialized presence out there in the store, so we need to have the flexibility and the freedom to be able to train our employees and bring a very specialized type of employee out there to the marketplace. I urge you to take this into consideration and to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam President, and members of the council. I'm Jerome Lloyd with the Mexican-American Grocers Association. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our President and CEO Stephen A. Soto, and our 16,000 members of the Mexican-American Grocers Association, I would like to take this opportunity to express strong opposition to the grocer worker retention ordinance. Our stores operate mainly in the inner city, we're in a Mexican and Hispanic market, Latino market, but we serve all different minorities. Do you realize the negative impact this ordinance will have on Los Angeles, on the prospective grocer stores owners who might come into the city? Already, Los Angeles, the state of California, have the district reputation, distinct reputation of being anti-business. This initiative will only further that belief and deter future business from moving into Los Angeles. Our law-abiding members provide economic stability and prosperity to the communities in which they do business, providing jobs from within the community, sponsorships of churches, schools, youth programs, and millions of dollars in scholarships to minority students throughout, not only Los Angeles and California, but throughout the country. As positive as it may appear to you, a non-business owner, we see this ordinance as counterproductive to our mutual goals of maximizing economic stability in our community, and more so in our member stores. We believe there is a time and a place for government interaction, this is not one of them. Our members have always hired 90 percent of their employees from within the community they do business in. This is also true after purchasing a business in that community. For the record, we would like to leave you with this one question. Why on earth would you feel an ordinance of this nature is necessary? What is the compelling argument? We ask, please, for your no vote on the ordinance of grocer worker retention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to call the following. Jody Solanke, Pete Perez, Brendan Huffman, Roxana Tynan.
Good afternoon. My name's Jody Solanke, and I'm with Big Savor Foods. We're currently a 13th store chain, primarily operating in Los Angeles, close to over 30 years, and I'm here to ask you to vote no on this ordinance because it's unfair. The exemption of stores smaller than 15,000 square feet, it's difficult to understand because the stated purpose for this ordinance is health and safety issues for consumers. However, stores fitting this threshold can be just as damaging to consumers as any other size store. Another issue with this exemption is that it will serve as the incentive for stores near the threshold to stay below it in order to stay competitive. This in turn will equate to fewer employees hired, less product choice, and an overall reduction in available services such as pharmacies in these stores. Once again, I ask you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council, good afternoon. My name is Pete Perez. I am the Director of Store Development for Boligas Latina Corporation. We are a supermarket operator with several stores in Los Angeles County, and currently expanding to areas outside of Los Angeles. I would like to bring to your attention what we believe will be the eventual outcome in case this ordinance becomes law. As many of you may know, the national supermarket chains have been unable to operate profitably in the inner cities. The stores they do not, that they do operate are losing a tremendous amount of money, have been unsuccessful in their marketing efforts, and have lost interest in operating in these areas. As a counter wave to the consolidation that characterized the supermarket industry in the 1990s, we expect to see a regionalization of the industry in the upcoming years where smaller, more focused community-type retailers will succeed. Supermarket operators that have unprofitable stores have two choices. One, to sell their stores to other retailers, and two, to close. We firmly believe the proposed worker retention ordinance will effectively eliminate option one. As a company, we will not purchase a store where we are forced to keep an existing employee base. Just because there are several competitors in an industry does not mean that all players operate the same way. You cannot expect a retailer to purchase a business and not bring their own people to operate, folks who are trained in the retailer's business practices, which when executed properly, allow the retailer to be successful. With the ordinance in place, the buyer market will effectively dry up. Unprofitable stores will close. Executives in Cincinnati, Boise, and Pleasanton do not care about the communities in the inner city of Los Angeles. They will close these stores, no question about it. Do we really want closed-down stores in these communities, creating blight, lost jobs, lost revenues for cities, and decreased property values? Who will fill the void in these communities, and how is the city planning to address these concerns? The economic implications of implementing this ordinance should be further evaluated. The measure is not good for the citizens of this great city. Thank you for your cooperation, and I ask for your no vote on this ordinance.
Good morning. I'm Brendan Huffman with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. First, let me thank the City Council for allowing many of our members another opportunity to express their concerns about this ordinance, as well as Council President Padilla for keeping an open mind and allowing us to express our concerns to you as well. The chamber has two primary concerns here. First, we think, we're concerned about this being a little bit too far of a stretch for using police powers in this instance. I might be wrong on that, but we haven't had an opportunity to have a more detailed hearing with more information. Secondly, this ordinance seems to be addressing a particular issue involving one chain, when there are many chains and hundreds of independent grocery stores operating the city of LA. Unfortunately, we missed an opportunity perhaps to address that particular chain so that UFCW workers at that particular chain could get...
I'm Roxana Tynan from the LA Alliance for New Economy, and we are here to speak in strong support of this ordinance. Similar ordinances regarding private sector workers have been passed in a number of other cities in this country, including San Francisco and New York, and have withstood legal challenge. So we're not making new law here. We're following some examples that have been set in other places in the country to ensure that workers are protected when economic dislocation occurs. The workers who are in these stores already are, generally speaking, from the community. They know the community. There's no reason why they shouldn't be given a 90-day period to be trained and to prove to the new employer that they can do a great job in that new store. It's a question of basic fairness, and it's a question of protecting existing workers and community residents who are already there. So I don't think we've heard any compelling reasons why workers should not be afforded this kind of protection. Each time the city does move forward to take these kinds of steps, we're threatened with the sky falling, and each time we've taken those steps, the sky has not fallen. So I want to encourage the council members to support this ordinance, and also, we're very excited at the Councilmember Parks' proposal around further notification for major retail closures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Norma Palacios. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I am not the head of any organization, I'm just somebody who worked in the grocery industry for 22 years. I went through one takeover from Lucky's to Albertson's. I had no problems being loyal to Albertson's. It was the company that I knew had to be profitable in order for me to provide a livelihood for my family. I had no problem making that transfer. Also, I feel that an experienced workforce such as myself can provide community safety by taking into consideration food safety issues. If you have a strong union employee base, they are not intimidated into doing things that are not healthy for the community, such as recycling meat or leaving dairy products out on the sales floor. I can walk by any aisle at any time, stick my hand out, and realize that the refrigeration is not at the correct temperature. That's just one example of what experienced workforce can do for you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name's Danny Garcia. I just want to share with you my experience. At the time, I used to work for Hughes Market. Hughes Market came to us, the employees, and told us that they were off for sale, and the rumor was that they were going to be bought out by Ralph's, Ralph's Market. At the time, before the sale was finalized, myself and all my coworkers were really scared, not knowing what our future would be with Ralph's Market coming in. We were scared, we didn't know if Ralph's Market would keep us or bring in their own people. So once the sale was finalized, management came to us right away and told us that Ralph's was going to do the right thing and keep all of its current employees. The reason for this was that they wanted to show the customers and the community that, that when they came into these stores, they would come into the stores that they've always known as like welcome, being welcomed into their own home. And the reason for this was, in order for them to be successful, they knew that we, the current employees, would be the ones that would make Ralph's Market successful. We knew how to run the store, we knew how to greet the employees, and we also knew what it would take to keep the operation flowing, floating smooth. So I asked the City Council to please, in favor of the city ordinance, to help it pass and give job security to all the current employees now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. After this, young woman speaks, Damon Gonzalez will be our last speaker after.
Good morning. My name is Linda Sabore, and I too have worked for companies in the supermarket business that have changed ownership. I've heard, I've sat here and I've heard many different initiatives being discussed this morning about transportation in the city of Los Angeles, how people need to work and live in the communities. Grocery store employees do work and live in their communities. They're home, home buyers in those communities. A lot of them are able just to walk across the street a couple of blocks to go to work. We, I've heard conversations about the homelessness. There's over 90,000 homeless people in the city of Los Angeles. If you do not pass this ordinance, there is no telling what would happen to the maybe 10,000 or 15,000 employees that will be affected if they lose their job. Who's to say that they will not be a part of that 90,000 that will increase the homeless people? The other people that got up and spoke about, the ones that are against the initiative, I don't understand how allowing people that have been on their jobs for 20 and 25 years to continue to work once a company is sold for another 90 days with job protection, how it would affect any grocery warehouse. So I ask you, as a grocery store employee, please consider and pass the ordinance to keep our people employed. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Damon Gonzalez. I'm a representative of District Council 36. However, that's not the reason I'm here. I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf, as a citizen of this community, and I got to tell you, as I was sitting there listening to some of the, the naysayers here against this proposition, I was offended by the fact that they just say, hey, if this, if you're going to push for this, we're not going to, we're not going to open the stores, we'll close them down. That is, that to me makes no sense whatsoever, and we know it's a fallacy, it's, it's a complete untruth. However, what, what really hit me especially hard was the fact that they're voting against this on the, on the mere basis of profits and greed, and for them to say the things they said about, you know, basically threatening the community that will close up these, these stores is just, I think it's unexcusable. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, thank you. I believe, excuse me, Councilmember Grill, I believe I checked the wrong box. Would you please put in support? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, that now closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Padilla, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Zine.
Could I have the city staff come up, please?
You were here recently and talked about the legal, potential legal challenges and what you felt secure about the ordinance. We subsequently received a letter from the Grocers Association. I'm just wondering if you had an opportunity to read their lawyer's point of view, and whether that impacts at all on your view of the ordinance?
Adrian Corasani, City Attorney's Office, we just received the letter, and we have had an opportunity to review it. The arguments that are put forth in the letter are arguments we contemplated in drafting the ordinance and doing the research that's contained in the report. This is likely a case of first impression in the California courts. However, looking at other similar ordinances around the country and existing case law, our office is prepared to aggressively defend this in the event of litigation.
Okay. And one other thing, is the issue on the 90 days consistent with, I believe we call the, the city services ordinance?
The service contract.
Service contract.
It is. It's, that also is a 90-day retention period.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. President, I want to say thank you for opening up the hearing again. I just want to make a couple of comments, and basically, in reference to this, in representing the community, that the sky has fallen. We wish we had a situation where stores were being purchased and you could have to deal with employees being retained. We have a situation where stores just close, turn over the lot to a 99-cent store, and basically continue to allow a community to be the most underserved as it relates to groceries within this region. And so, we've gone well beyond those situations that were articulated, and it is not a veiled threat. When the stores say they're not coming, I have a community that they don't come. We even find the larger stores that move out, just as we had a store close at Manchester and Hoover recently, just disappeared overnight. We've seen other retailers such as Macy's leave overnight and not even tell their employees. And so, this is real life to us, and so, when retailers come to us... And so, this is real life to us, and so, when retailers come to us and say, "This is a hindrance in coming to your community," or any community, we take it very seriously because we can drive for miles without finding a legitimate grocery store in the 8th District in the surrounding areas. And so, when they talk about the process of being able to get their comments in, or the notice in the transfer as far as how that impinges upon them, or retaining employees, in which, on one hand, if you buy the company or sell the company, it's going to be taken out of the profits of the seller because the buyer is not going to absorb that whole 90-day issue. So, at some point, it's going to financially impact both sides. And as we've said before, if you're going to buy a store and you put all of these limits on the buyer, they will easily go outside of the boundaries of the city of L.A. and buy a store to where they can service their clients and not have to be burdened by an additional resource. So, for those who don't live in the 8th District, they may say that we're a crying wolf or the sky is falling. We have already seen the sky fall. We live in an existence that does not have the grocery stores that you see throughout the city of Los Angeles. So, listening to these grocers, the Mexican-American grocers, the independent grocers, we have to listen to them because they're the only ones that still are in our community. And when they tell us what they're not going to do, they have been forthright and honest about what they can't do in order to stay in business. And so, from my perspective, as far as 8th District, I'm going to vote against it again because I don't think that it gives a fair playing field for the stores that go in communities that other stores won't go into. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, just a reminder that this, again, it's not the first time this item is before us. It was first before us months ago, and it came in in the form of a motion asking the city attorney to craft the ordinance. And the ordinance that's now back before us does nothing other than begin to implement what we've asked them for. We heard it just last week, a week ago, and it was a 12 to 2 vote. So, it's before us today on second reading. At the hearing a week ago, we offered a couple of things. First of all, an open invitation to, whether it was the business community, representatives of the grocery store chains, or the industry itself, and anybody else who thought this wasn't a good thing or had significant flaws, to please come forward, give us additional comments, additional opportunity to present their point of view. And I don't know about you all, and this isn't going to be said in a disrespectful manner, but I didn't hear from anybody until yesterday afternoon. So, we gave yet another week of a window of time for you all to come forward, and I didn't hear from anybody until yesterday afternoon. And between yesterday afternoon and the testimony this morning, there's nothing that convinces me that we should change from the course that we're on right now. I will remain open, and I hope to adopt this today, and I'm asking my colleagues to vote for this today. And if the industry folks think there's a way to improve upon this, then maybe we can continue to talk over the next couple of months, but nothing that should change our direction or our timeframe from adopting this matter today. So, I wanted to point out what has not happened over the course of the last week. Now, let me point to some things that have happened over the course of the last week. We voted on December 14th. That was a week ago. On December 17th, we're reading in the newspaper that the sale of the Albertson's chain is pending. Coincidence? I think not. And not that we're going after Albertsons only or anything like that, but it may be indicative to what's going on within an industry that, again, comes back to the very health and safety of our city residents. Those who handle the produce, those who handle the meats and the poultry, the very items we put into our bodies throughout the city is and should be a big concern for policymakers at all levels of government, the city notwithstanding. Finally, one of the comments that one of the folks who came up made was something about how supermarkets and these national chains are finding that their stores are unprofitable. I think that's garbage. Just months ago, literally months ago, when we were in the middle of that supermarket strike, regardless of the side that you were on, whether you supported the employees or you supported the store owners, we continued to read during that turmoil and since then that many of these chains were experiencing significant profits and were giving significant dividends to their shareholders. So, I don't buy that argument. Colleagues, arguments remain the same. The health and safety of our residents are a big concern and should be a significant priority for us as policymakers. This is a way to help strengthen the health and safety regulations within the city of Los Angeles. I think it's very reasonable. It's narrowly crafted, and if there's ways to improve upon it after we adopt it today and begin to implement it, then we should consider doing so on a going-forward basis. But let's not stop what we have before us today. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, followed by Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, you know, the other day, I voted against this, and I had some concerns, but I said, "I'm not an attorney. I don't understand these things." So, I just had some concerns, and you answered those concerns. I still felt it wasn't right. But now, I've gotten a letter in front of me written a couple of days ago, and your answer to Mr. Parks' question was, "We're willing to aggressively defend the city's ordinance." That doesn't give me much reassurance, quite frankly, because we aggressively defend the city many times and lose, and we've lost some very big lawsuits that we've aggressively fought. So, I appreciate your willingness to be aggressive. That doesn't give me any comfort. Secondly, you said, "There are similar lawsuits around the country on similar ordinances, not the same ordinance, but similar ordinances." Again, that doesn't give me any comfort. If you had said, "The exact same ordinance was passed in San Francisco, and it's been defended," I'd say, "Then they've got a legitimate statement saying, 'We have an ordinance that's defensible.'" What you said was, "There was a similar ordinance that was defended. It's not the same thing." And not necessarily particularly if it's not in the same state, because state courts have different rulings. And so, what I don't hear from you is an absolute, "This is a slam dunk. This is defensible, and we're going to win no matter what." And so, I'm a little troubled by that. I'm also troubled by the fact I got a letter here just a couple of days ago, addressing some really serious legal issues, and I think this really needs to be thought out before we act today to go forward on something that may cause us considerable financial burden to defend ourselves. And this may be one of those things, we end up having the city attorney bring in an outside consultant to tell us how to defend it. So, I'm very concerned about it. As a member of the Budget Finance Committee, we came in here just yesterday with our mid-year financials and said, "Do everything we can to slow down expenditures," because we were looking at some big negative numbers yesterday in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Do we need to go out there and take a chance that we're going to have to defend a case in court that may go all the way up into federal Supreme, into appeal courts? Very costly system. Do we need to do that? So, my concern is, no, we don't. Secondly, Mr. Padilla's statement, this is about health and safety. How in the world does this ordinance protect the health of the citizens of Los Angeles, not just a few, but the citizens of Los Angeles, any different than the county health department already does? Can you answer that for me and hold my time, please?
To answer your last question, the ordinance doesn't set forth any additional regulations on health and safety. It does work to preserve the industry knowledge of the existing laws so that when the personal transitions from store to store, that industry knowledge is retained.
That's not health. It's not health or safety.
Well, in the laws governing handling of produce and dairy and meat, those laws are intended to protect the health and safety.
Those are already done by the county health department.
But the county health department doesn't require workers to retain the knowledge during a transition. This specifically addresses that moment when the stores change hands.
So, are you telling me that if the stores change hand and the employees don't stay there, that now the new store is somehow going to violate the county health rules and laws, and they'll be getting off? No, they're not going to get off. The county health inspector is going to be out there and cite them if they're violating the law, regardless of whether that employee is there or not.
There's no way to know whether they would violate or not violate. This is just a precautionary measure to ensure that they'll comply.
That's a pretty weak argument. As far as, I can't see you sustaining that in court, quite frankly. Finally, there are some big areas of this city that have been struggling for years, decades, three or four that I can think of that sit around this shoe, that have been struggling to bring markets into their area. And I mean struggling, fighting. There are areas, there are large areas of this city that have no markets, some going back to the 1960 Watts riots that were burned out, never rebuilt, and some people have been trying to get them back, and we can't get them back. And the last thing we need to do, ladies and gentlemen, is put any kind of disincentive whatsoever, that any market that would even begin to consider coming into some of those areas, those very underserved areas, would have another trepidation about why they would want to come to those areas of Los Angeles and locate if they say, "Well, we're willing to make an experiment, but if it doesn't work, we may want to sell or move out." And we're saying, "No, no, no, you can't do that. You've got to stay, and we're going to make sure that you keep those employees, and we're going to put restrictions on you." What kind of market that we're begging to come here is going to add that extra layer of requirements on them and be willing to come here? I can't think of anything that'd be worse as an incentive to business than what you're doing here today. And I thank God I don't have that problem in my district, but I know there are parts of this city that do, and I really feel sorry for those areas of the district that don't have that kind of service. And putting this kind of extra layer bureaucratic requirement on them does that very thing. So, I think we should stay the course, not pass this ordinance today, at least send it back for a few months and have some real legal minds look at these issues that have been brought forward as it relates to this ordinance to determine if it's sustainable. And not, no offense to the city attorney I'm talking about, let's bring in some constitutional people, Shimerowski or whatever, you know, some people from UCLA or SC, some of the great minds out there on the constitutional issues to see if this is sustainable, because I think we're going down a road that's going to cost us a lot of money, and we should be very careful, and particularly in light of what the CAO told us yesterday. So, I urge you, no vote. Thank you.
Councilmembers, if I might, to respond to the first question. We didn't answer your first question. I'd like to answer your first question, but about the likelihood of success in court. Okay.
Right. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You can answer the question. I'm interested in listening to the answer.
Certainly. David Michelson with the City Attorney's Office. Suffice it to say that the city attorney would not approve as deformed in legality an ordinance that we did not feel could survive judicial scrutiny on a constitutional challenge. We have many lawyers in our office, and some of those lawyers have extensive experience in dealing with constitutional laws. We've been up to the U.S. Supreme Court and to the California Supreme Court on constitutional challenge. Again, you never have a crystal ball when you're dealing with litigation, especially when advancing public policy issues. We cannot guarantee you success. The council member is absolutely right. But again, we would not have approved as deformed in legality unless we felt that in a court of law, the city had a good opportunity to prevail.
I wish that the City Attorney's Office had that much confidence and concern on issues involving the LAPD, instead of rolling over, as they oftentimes do on settlements, instead of fighting them, which I believe they should do, but that's a whole nother subject. The concern I have on this is the 90 days, no less than 90 days. In that transitionary period of time, that employee, those employees will remain in place, and the transition would take place, the change of ownership, the new signs, whatever the case may be. And we're only talking about a 90-day holdover, not longer than that. Is that correct?
Yeah, the ordinance is only a 90-day retention period.
So, after that 90 days, that employee could be booted out the door, and other employees come in and they're trained by the new management, or whatever the case may be?
Not necessarily. The ordinance requires the successor grocery employer to conduct a written evaluation of each employee in the retention period, the end of the 90 days. If the evaluation is satisfactory, then the ordinance requires that they consider hiring that employee.
Consider hiring, not mandated.
Not mandated.
So, there's an option. They can, for example, I own a store, big company, and I'm going to sell the whole chain, like Albertsons, or Fazio used to be in the business, and Lucky, and all these different stores that have been bought out over the years. A new owner comes in, does evaluation, everyone gets out, and we come in with all new employees. That can be done?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And our new employees don't have to be unionized?
We don't touch on whether or not they should be.
We don't, but looking at the horizon, what I see happening is the non-union stores coming into play. And what I see happening with that is the struggle between the unionized stores and the non-unionized stores. And what troubles me is Ralph's Kroger Corporation, and I spoke to the U.S. Attorney's Office, they're bringing them up on charges because when they were on strike, they took some of their people and brought them in in another store, a different name, et cetera, and apparently, they're talking a major settlement and substantial allegations. And that's a store that has a reputation nationwide to do something unscrupulous. And if that's the case with a major corporation that's done something unscrupulous according to what charges were filed, what protection do the employees have? What protection do the consumers have to know that the employees are knowledgeable and trained? The person working the meat section, contamination, the fish section, the produce section? I'm not worried about canned goods, but what about those other items that people purchase in the store? The bakery department?
You know, during the retention period, that's, you know, the 90-day period where the employee does get a chance to work, and in creating the provision requiring the written evaluation, the hope is that a fair assessment will be done of each employee and that it could potentially lead to a longer retention.
That's the hope. But in reality, we're talking about what the ordinance would require is 90 days, and after that, it's a crapshoot. It may work for the employee, may not, but assured that they would be able to have the money for rent, for their car payment, for the tuition for the children, for food, for 90 days. After that, it's a crapshoot. Would you admit to that?
That is beyond the jurisdiction of the ordinance.
So, you admit that it's only 90 days, that we really have any teeth in this ordinance?
Yes, it's a 90-day retention period.
Right. And within those 90 days, the new owner would have an opportunity to be training a new workforce if the new owner wanted to replace the existing workforce after that 90 days, and that new workforce during the 90 days with adequate training would be in a better position to safeguard the public's health, safety, and welfare.
Okay. And I know that my colleague, my distinguished colleague, my good friend, Councilmember Greg Smith, mentioned some areas of the city don't have markets. We don't have a supermarket downtown in Los Angeles. We don't have a supermarket in many parts of the city. And in my district, there's a new market, Vayarta, that is building markets all over the San Fernando Valley. I don't know if they're union or non-union, or whatever the case may be, but I know that it's a bustling place. My concern is that we take care of the consumers of Los Angeles, we give them supermarkets. I know that the tragedy that occurred down in, Councilmember Parks and I were down there years ago when that area had major unrest. Some of those places have rebuilt, and people need jobs. We need to provide a quality of life, jobs that pay so you can pay the rent, you can do the nice things that we all take advantage of in life, or take for granted, I should say. So, I don't have any problem with this ordinance. I don't have any problem saying 90 days is, I think honestly it's too short, but at least it gives that person, that employee, three months to figure out what they're going to do, and it's the crapshoot at best for the employees. So, I will support this ordinance, and if it gets challenged, hopefully it can withstand the challenge. And just one more question. Do we have any other places in the state, any other places in the state where they have anything like this, similar to this in the state of California?
The state of California itself has a retention ordinance for security workers.
For what workers?
Security workers.
Okay.
And it's similar provisions to this.
In supermarkets in the state? Are we the only ones?
We're the only ones entering the grocery industry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Ms. Hahn.
We're here for a second reading, and when we approve it, which I'm going to encourage my colleagues to approve this, we can go forward. The bottom-line question is this: Explain again health and safety aspects of this 90-day retention plan.
If we consider this under a rational basis test, which a court would likely apply, the government's legitimate concern is preserving the health and safety of its citizens through the proper handling of food and meat, produce, et cetera, following OSHA, FDA, county regulations. By preserving the industry knowledge from the incumbent grocery employer's personnel to the successor grocery employer's personnel, we are maintaining those health and safety standards.
We're a policy group here. We make policy decisions. We'll let the courts do the court stuff. From a policy position, we need to protect the health and safety of our communities. And also, I still have a bad taste in my mouth of that whole issue of the grocery workers and what they went through just a little bit ago. We went through a holiday season, actually, during that strike, and, you know, people matter, be they the consumer or be they the worker. And this gives a little bit more dignity to the process of mergers and acquisition. 90 days isn't the end of the world for anybody who's on the corporate side, but it does give a worker at least a chance to think about their future and their life. I know we're not considering it from that perspective. It's health and safety, but their health... It's health and safety, but their health and safety matters to me as well. So I urge our council to approve the second reading. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Well, I am-- I'm glad that we had an extra week to think about this, to hear the concerns. I'm glad all of you took the time to come down here to listen to our-- for us to listen to your concerns. But I feel stronger today than I did a week ago that this is the right thing for us to do in the city of Los Angeles. I was particularly fascinated by the remark of one of the owners of a grocery store who said, "You know, the first 30 to 60 days, that's the most important. That's when we show who we are. That's what shows what we care about. That's what shows what kind of a market or store we're going to be." Well, I'll tell you this: If you're not willing to keep people who've been working there, if you're not willing to have continuity in the neighborhood and the community, if you're not-- if you're not the kind of store that cares about workers' livelihoods, then you're the kind of store I don't want to shop in. And you really sort of just made the argument on why this is really important. And while some have concern that the health and safety is sort of hard to describe, I think we know enough about the hard-working clerks, the hard-working people who are in there, who know the store, who know the produce, who know the layout of the store, who know the woman who said she can walk by the refrigerated section, put out her hand, and know whether or not that's the right temperature. I mean, those are the people we want to keep. I had a store, Avon's, closed with no announcement on Friday afternoon in San Pedro. No announcement. Let people know that the store was closing. Employees were frustrated. They did not know their future. Here we are, the holidays. I mean, that's just happening over and over again. So I can't imagine that in any way this would hurt a business for 90 days to keep those workers who I would think you would want to keep, the workers who knew your customers, who knew what their preferences were. I mean, I have-- I'm in line all the time and hear the clerks call people by name, ask them about their families, their health, you know, suggest certain things that they might want to try or buy in that store. That's what we want. We've become a very cold society, and I, for one, am stronger today than I was a week ago on the fact that I think we need this ordinance in the city of Los Angeles, and I'm proud of us for doing it.
Councilmember Weisar followed by Councilmember Parks.
Thank you very much. And first, let me say that as your client, you are the city attorney, or the council, or your clients, you know, we usually assess the risks associated with legal advice as to whether we want to go forward, our-- if we're going to win or not, costs, et cetera. And I've been listening to this. I've been sitting down. I'm an attorney myself. I told myself I don't want to put my policy hat with my legal hat. But on this one, you know, we all know that the health and safety have-- is a legal-- it's a term of art in the legal sense, and that it's often used to regulate commerce, whether it's by cities, or the state, or the federal government. I feel very comfortable, after hearing you and reading your documents, that there is no real legal issue here. On the procedural issues, this has been around for some time now. I feel confident and comfortable that this has had its due process through our city procedures. And as I'm listening to everyone speaking today, I really don't hear anything that would make me believe that having an employer wait 90 days would affect significantly their ability to do business. And so, weighing all that, I stand up in strong support of this resolution, and want to thank Council President Padilla for bringing this forward. And it's also tilts in the favor of supporting this, considering that my mother is a member of USCW, and I would have been more than thrilled to know that if she was to be moved from her job, or I knew someone would have bought her company, that she would have at least 90 days to be there to make sure that she provided for her family in the interim. So thank you, Council President Padilla, for bringing this forward.
Councilmember Parks for closing.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd just like to-- one thing I think Mr. Smith asked about the potential litigation, I think all of us should be aware, just on outside counsel, not talking about the cost of the City Attorney's Office, the city spends about $30 million a year on outside counsel. So if we get into some form of litigation and the likelihood that it goes outside, there is a significant cost already and something that will add to it. The one part of the ordinance that I think the grocery industry has really zeroed in on, as far as my talking to them, is that even though we continue to talk about the concerns about the existing employees, and we must hold them over for 90 days, the seller of the business only has two requirements. They must, within five days, give a notice, and they must give a list of employees. All of the responsibility of dealing with the employees and the care comes with the new owner. The new owner who didn't hire the employee, the new owner who has no relationship with the employee, the new owner that's buying a business. And I agree to some degree that this is not going to hurt business. It's going to hurt the community, because business is going to make a bottom-line decision of where do I buy businesses? And if they don't buy them when a store is failing or going out of business, it will close and become a pick-and-save, will become a variety of other businesses, but it won't become a grocery store. So business will not be hurt, because they're going to make the bottom-line decision as to how they spend their money. I think all we have to do, colleagues, is look at the annual report by the Los Angeles County Economic Development Council, and they tell us each year why businesses either leave LA, leave California, or why they expand or grow in other parts of the region. And the number-one issue that they talk about routinely is the overburden of process, of rules, of issues in which they feel are anti-business. And this is just one more step in that area. And so, one thing, I certainly know this is going to be approved, but I'm going to ask that the CLA and the CAO report back to budget and finance within a year to give us a financial impact as to this ordinance, so that we can have some judgment as to-- at least in the first 12 months, so that we'll be-- have some idea of what the impact is. But again, I think that the issue is business will not be hurt. They'll just move to other places. We've seen it over and over within this community. People will build in Inglewood, Culver City, and they will force people in poor communities to drive to other cities to get their groceries and their other retail products.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, if you could, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
That item's been approved. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I know that Ms. Hahn has asked for a specific item to be before us.
Yes, she called items 38 and 43 and 44.
She wanted 46, I think, I believe, which was the Watts--
No, I want the 46, please.
46.
Let's just do that.
Do you-- we do have cards. Do you want to open it up for public--
I think I'll speak first, and then I'll let them speak.
Please, go ahead. Yes, Ms. LaBonde.
To support of information, the General Manager of Recreation of Parks is here for just one minute. I'll give him my time. I won't say anything. I just wanted to hear about it, one for my committee on class parks. He'll be in and out in one minute. But I want to send him back to the Parks Department. He has other issues in the city he's got to--
It's between you and Ms. Hahn.
My Watts community, I'll let them-- my Watts community has been here since, like, 9:30.
I know. All right, Mr. Muckrey. One minute, and you get back to clean the parks?
All right. You want to give him one minute--
One minute, John. Boom, boom.
But you better, like, go into the parks and watch--
One minute, thank you.
If it's not one minute, I see some people here are going to come after you.
All right, good job. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Start the clock.
Go, start the clock.
Okay. This is item number 27? 27, okay. Colleagues, we have item number 27 before us. Mr. Muckrey, you have one minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank the community of Watts, because it does affect all the communities in the city of Los Angeles. The city, in its infinite wisdom, a few years ago designated 47 urban impact areas. In those urban impact areas, we have a program called CLASS, Clean and Safe Parks. Embedded within the CLASS program is a program we call Youth Employment Intern Program. This program attacks kids between 14 and 18, giving them job skills. I've been listening to issues of equity throughout the city today and on other days. We are attacking equity issues with this program. This program is going to take 40 kids between 18 and 24, give them job skills in three areas. Once-- it's a 23-week program. The money that's been given to us under this grant, 100% of it's going to pay the stifens for these people. We are going to take the management of the program under the CLASS parks. So the general fund will not be impacted in any way. At the end of the 23 weeks, there will be 40 kids who will have job skills that can transition into work. And this is a small effort we're making, but it's a one step forward to bring people into the mainstream.
Thank you, Mr. Muckrey. Thank you very much, Mr. Muckrey. I asked for an eye vote, and I thank the great community of Watts and Ms. Hahn for allowing Mr. Muckrey to get in there and out. Thank you.
Time expired. Perfect. Okay. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Fourth one.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Colleagues, my Watts community has been here all day today, and I just wanted to bring to your attention, and I think we're going to open some public comment, let them speak, but what we're doing today is we're approving a grant that will bring us one step closer to making the Watts Star Theater in the community of Watts a reality. It's hard to believe, but for too long, the families of Watts have lacked really basic opportunities and activities that are available throughout the rest of the city and neighborhoods everywhere, and that people probably take for granted. This puts this community at a great disadvantage. And the absence of a community movie theater is just one example of what we're missing in this great community of Watts. And over the past several years, seems like a long time, we've been working with Barbara Stanton, who is here this morning, and other members of the community to build a new state-of-the-art theater, which will provide educational opportunities for-- particularly for young people. And the beauty of the Watts Star Theater is it actually serves two purposes, and this is what's been complicated about it, but what is really part of the dream of this theater. One, it's a two-screen, state-of-the-art movie theater, so that we can have first-run movies can be shown in Watts, which has not happened. This community does not have a theater with first-run movies. And, you know, this would be huge. Just if it was a movie theater, it would be important to this community, be important to the young people. But it's also an education and vocation center to train local youth, the various trades of the film industry: editing, camera operation, sound management. 20,000 square feet is dedicated to this idea of helping kids find careers in the movie industry. And the goal is to establish apprenticeships for these students with our local studios and movie companies. This theater will be located in Watts Cultural Crescent, which is right adjacent to the Watts Towers, and a brand-new junior arts center that we're also building. This really will become the center for arts and culture in this community. Today, we're approving a pre-development grant that gets us closer, and I really want you to join me today in voting to approve this. And I want to recognize the Watts Star team, specifically Barbara Stanton, for her work. And certainly our CRA staff, and Walter is here today, Bill Price is here today. And thank you. And I-- we've had-- we've had-- in fact, why doesn't the whole community of Watts stand up today?
Good job.
And, you know, it has been a long, long struggle. Unfortunately, like everything in Watts, is a long, long struggle. But this group of people have not given up. They have not been discouraged enough to quit. They have been discouraged. They have been frustrated. There is still a lot of money to raise to build this theater. So any of you watching or hearing my voice, or any of you sitting around here today, if you can think of possible connections to this theater and possible donors who'd be interested in investing in the community in this way, let us know so that we can truly build this theater. So again, thanks to all who've worked on this, who have not given up. This is a dream that has been deferred, but this is a dream that will live and, as long as I am alive, will not die. So thank you, and I hope you join me in this. And now, if we can have public comment.
Thank you. I'd like to then-- we have several cards here on this item. They're all yes. Barbara Stanton, John Waterman, Ozzy Gonzac, Ren Blight, and James Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President and council members. We want-- I'm going to represent all of us. In the spirit of time, we're going to try to get everyone out of here. We are very honored to be here today. Our councilwoman has done a magnificent job of keeping this on the front burner, making sure that this happens. Our industry leaders are with us, our political representatives are with us, our community is with us. This will enable us to move one step closer, pull our permits, and we commit that this will be a building that we'll all be proud of for generations to come. This will never be an entity where it won't be operating in people, young people, older people, all of us having the opportunity that's taken for granted to many communities. So we would like to, on behalf of all of my people, John Waterman, Ren Blight, my Jenkins, Gels Martinez, Pat Tobin and Associates, Ms. Moore, Tommy Jiquet, and last but not least, my mother, Ozzy Gonzac. And Mr. Wilson here from the NAACP. We want to thank you this morning. We want to let you know that we will not let you down, councilwoman. This is going to-- we're breaking ground very shortly. So thank you very much for your help. Yes.
Thank you. Other speakers, Ozzy? And is anyone else going to speak, or just Barbara?
Thank you.
Just Barbara? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I hope to establish a pattern where, when I rise, you know that I really have something to say. I do want to commend Ms. Hahn for the work that she's done, and personally, I'm very proud of you. But I have to just say, tell the story of when I was on the second floor, chief deputy for Councilman Nate Holden, and I had a young lady named Barbara who was insistent on seeing me. I can't even remember how long she waited. I just want to truly commend you and your mom. This has been very, very difficult. There have been so many people that have advised Barbara to let this go. They have said to her, "Move on. It's not that important." She refused to. She's had good days and a lot of bad days. So I'm just so proud to see that now we're at a point where we're going to break ground and get things moving, and I'm doubly proud to have an opportunity to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. And just a few remarks. I had the pleasure with working with Barbara since I was, gosh, at HUD or DreamWorks. I can't remember when we started. And you're right, Mr. Wesson and Ms. Hahn, and this was a project that no one ever thought would actually get off the ground, and people told them no. And I know Barbara has said not taking no for an answer. So congratulations to all of you that are here today, as well as Ms. Hahn, for your leadership on this. Council colleagues, that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Congratulations. Ms. Hahn, you have a-- Ms. Hahn, you have a few more items before we get to item 45 for Ms. Perry.
I see that.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Those were items 38, 43, and 44.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. I call these items special today because I wanted to speak about what we're doing, again, that's good in Wilmington, especially at our Wilmington Industrial Park. This is another project that has languished for decades, and this was-- when I took office in 2001, revitalizing this industrial park really was one of my priorities. I immediately got our city departments to focus on this industrial park. We dealt with encroachments. We started to pave roads and alleys that had really been dirt for years. We brought in new companies and helped the ones that were already there to flourish. We worked with Juanita's Foods, and they recently expanded-- We worked with Juanita's Foods, and they recently expanded. And today, when we pass these items, we will be working to continue to clean up contamination in the park, but most significantly, we'll be allowing for two great businesses in Wilmington, Union Ice and American Soccer, to expand. And just with these expansions, that will bring 140 new jobs into the Wilmington Industrial Park, and that's really what the CRA is all about. We still have a long way to go in Wilmington, but I really just wanted to recognize the work and the progress that we're making, and I want to thank the CRA staff, particularly our project manager in this, Susan Tataro, Susan Stan. Stan, Susan. Tireless efforts of really the entire staff and the staff of CDD for their work on the BEDI grant and the Section 108 loan. So, colleagues, vote for these, and you will be voting for a cleaner place, more jobs, and investment in, again, a community that historically in the city has been left behind.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Well, with that, how can we vote no, Ms. Hahn? Very proud to rise in support of this and in committee. I wanted, I wanted to speak on it just for two seconds because I think it shows what coming together with a lot of different agencies in the city, working well together, and the council office leadership can do. In a town where most industrial activity seems to be seeping away either overseas or to other parts of the United States where costs are lower, we are showing that we have a tremendous amount of land right here. I learned from Ms. Hahn that a quarter of the city's junkyards are in Wilmington. And if we think about the land, many people think that it's junk too. But if we actually take the time, and I want to thank the Brownfields team, which is working in a lot of your districts, colleagues, and you should really follow the big as well as some of the smaller projects, the old gas stations, the dry cleaners, the industrial land, because as we recycle that land and we use tax-specific revenue that comes from that, some people say, "Don't do that, it takes future revenues away." We're not going to have those future revenues if we don't recycle this land. And these are the good-paying jobs. When we look at all the AYSO uniforms that are made by one of the companies, the cold storage, the import-export, and the logistics industry, the more of that that we can bring off of our, of our ships and actually store here in Los Angeles, the better our economy will be at these high-level jobs. We talked about it with the grocery stores today, but these, these are the places where growth can happen and we can stay a strong industrial power. So congratulations to the Wilmington Park. For those who are watching and might have business and looking to expand industry, go to Wilmington. You can go online, it's, the website is, what is it? WilmingtonIndustrialPark.org. Check it out, see the land. There's great opportunities, and we'll see you down in Wilmington.
Thank you. Those are great remarks.
Councilmember Zine.
I just need to congratulate you, Janice. I know that your commitment from Wilmington, San Pedro, Wilmington Harbor Gateway, Watts, the whole area, celebrated the success in Watts. Now we're talking about another part of your district, and I just want to acknowledge on this last day before we go away and come back next year, that the people of your district, District 15, nodding your head, sir. Keep that going, keep going down, nodding that head, yes. Janice Hahn is there, doing the good work for the people. And you've got a wonderful community. My son's down there protecting that community on a motorcycle, so if you come across Officer Zine, be nice to him. It's the holiday season. Congratulations, Janice.
One more congratulatory comments by Mr. Labange.
I couldn't let that pass after Mr. Garcetti led off and talked about great Wilmington, named after the Wilmington Delaware, which was the first city in America to sign the Constitution in the capital of Wilmington, because I remember that going through on the train from Washington, New York, and the conductor saying Delaware, Wilmington, Delaware. But also, Ms. Hahn, as I want to rave praises on this, because it is true, and you, you push towards the end of the year, I know I'm putting motions in now on the end of the year to focus on next year on, but this is very important for Watts and also very important for Wilmington, so I just wanted to stand to thank you, and also want to look back behind you and your dedicated staff that's there, that have focused on that. Staff helps us all out, and I want to thank my staff at this time too, and all staffs as a former staffer, how important it is. But it, but it seems, as Mr. Zine, when he stood up so eloquently spoke about the end of the year and pushing and complimenting you, I wanted to just rise to chime in on that. No other people work very hard, like Mr. Padilla on his issues as staff work. I see Laura smiling, Alex reading, the forever engineer. Anyway, go-go. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. This is the congratulatory Hahn amendment here, items. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the, on all three items before us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. That item has been approved. I think we're on to Ms. Perry's item, item number 45.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would, allow the speakers to go first, and then I'll speak after they're done.
Thank you. How much, how much time would you like to have on this?
Um, I, let's see. I believe there was not a quorum yesterday in the committee. I would say not to exceed 10 minutes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I'd like to call the following speakers. Ahmed from the mayor's office, Victor Franco Jr., Mike, I can't read, but Alvedres, I think it is, Alvedres, Jay Ziff, and George Reiner. Actually, George is here, and only if there are questions. So if there are questions, we'll call him. Please, go ahead, Ahmed.
Good afternoon. By now, my name is Ahmed Padat. I'm the mayor's office of economic development, representing Mr. Deputy Mayor Bud Overom, who couldn't make it down here. We're here today to strongly support the Metropolis project, and we realize that there might be some discussions between them and the neighbor, and we're hoping that the issues will be soon resolved. But generally speaking, we're in strong support of the project, and we hope that the project goes forward after about 17 years of delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Victor Franco Jr. with Central City Association. CCA is also in support of the IDS Metropolis project. I'm going to take a moment to savor this moment, actually. I'm up here with business community, obviously, layers in support of this, and so we think this is all, it's nice to be all on the same page for, for a time here. Obviously, this is an existing parking lot, so we're looking forward to more development in the downtown area, that, that great urban development, close to transportation. We're excited because this developer also has agreed to a number of other CRA policies, including prevailing wage. It's, this developer is a Taft-Hartley developer, so it uses pension fund money to reinvest into the community, and we think those are, those are all positives. And so, not to take up too much more time, just wanted to urge your support for this project. Thank you.
Mike? Sorry, I mispronounced your last name.
That's okay. I do that sometimes myself. Mike Alvedres, Executive Director of Skid Row Housing Trust. I'm here today because we've become involved with IDS Real Estate in order to help them fulfill the replacement housing plan. I think you've seen in the staff report that previously there were some units demolished back in 91, 1991 by the former developer. Just to let you know that IDS has reached out to us to locate a project in the Central City East area that was under construction, but, but which has sustained a gap, and we just happen to have one under construction. It's our Rainbow Apartments project. It's an 89-unit, new facility that will have efficiency units, and it is targeted toward chronically homeless people. So we think this is a particularly useful way to fulfill that obligation. We're very happy that IDS has reached out to us, and we look forward to establishing more linkages with the downtown business community, as well as the city, to forge new relationships to target the problem that we all know very well of chronic homelessness in Skid Row. I think we've had enough bad news about that issue for quite a long time, and we hope this will be good news so that this project can be completed and open up next April 1. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm Patrick Spillane with IDS Real Estate. For clarification purposes, Jay Ziff, George Reiner, and Linda Bozum are to speak to CEQA issues should they be raised in public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll then go to Fidelina Escobar, Alex Lopez, followed by Tony Kanzleri.
My name is Omar Amador, and I will speak in behalf of Fidelina Escobar. I'm with SAU Local 1877, and we're here to fully support the IDS Real Estate Group for their public commitment to hiring responsible contractors. Fidelina here is a victim of irresponsible contracting. After working eight, after working eight years at 801 South Figueroa, she was let go overnight for, after Manny Brothers purchased a building. So we need to fully support responsible contractors and developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Audible councilmembers, my name's Alex Lopez. I'm with Painters and Allied Trades, District Council 36. We support this project. This is a privately funded project. We commend the developer here. He's agreed to pay prevailing wage, utilize the local building trades apprenticeship programs, paid living wage policies, all the, all the things that are benefit to the community. These are the type of jobs that the building trades and the painters and allied trades unions really like to see come to the downtown area in the city of LA. They, they give us a return. We're able to reach out to the local communities to recruit apprentices for our programs. They're able to work here in their hometown. And this, these type of projects, this particular project just doesn't provide jobs. It's going to help provide careers for, for apprentices. So we support this project, as well as the Los Angeles Building Trades Council. Thank you.
Okay. Next speakers are Tony Kanzneri, Linda Bozum, Jay Ziff, and we know George Reiner is here if there's any questions, we can go directly.
I was going to say good morning. It's good afternoon, President Padilla, members of the council. I'm here today wishing that I could be saying the things Victor Franco said, which I agree with, and my client, the Manny Brothers, also agree with in terms of the need to have this project developed. We do want this property, it's right next to the Manny Brothers building at 8th and Figueroa, to happen. But, and by the way, Joseph Manny's here today, and I will yield some of my time if you have any questions of him personally. To set the context, before I get into the reasons why this is improperly before you, to set the context, we would like to avoid having that issue dealt with at all. And that can be avoided if you give us 30 days with the message to the developer that it makes a lot more sense for these parties to sit down and, and possibly in meetings that Councilwoman Perry could participate in, Bud Overom could participate in, in which a very minor modification that we've requested that severely impacts our building could be worked out. And we think that as leaders of this community, it really behooves you to think very carefully about that, as I now go through what, as a lawyer, I have to do, and that is tell you why there, that this is not legally sufficient as it is before you today. And in fact, I think as you hear that, you will also recognize that it's not equitable. My clients have basically, they come here really as good neighbors who have had 22 days to review and consider this project, and only one week to review the plans which the developer finally provided. This is a developer that did not come to the client who, excuse me, my client, who is their next-door neighbor. We own both the building at 8th and Fig and the property at Francisco and 8th. Did not come to the Manny Brothers at all to say, "Here's what we're planning on doing. We're going to do significant modifications to the plans that were approved in 1989, and we want to be sure it works for you." That's what I do in my practice when I represent parties who are developing a project like this. They didn't do that. We then ended up having, now, let's see, did I have 10 minutes? Didn't we say I had 10 minutes? Thank you. On November 29th, we wrote a letter requesting a continuance of the November 30 hearing. It was continued for two weeks. That very day, we met with the developer and asked for plans that we could then submit to our architect, A.C. Martin. We didn't get those plans until December 9th. We then gave them to A.C. Martin, and within a week, we had a diagram that was prepared by A.C. Martin that basically left all of the building pads where they were. We asked for one thing. In Phase 4, which is the last phase to develop, we requested a 50-foot reduction in height. Or if they wanted to get the same square footage, build a larger building and a lower building, because it severely impacts us. We then suggested to the developer that, and that was last Friday, that they carefully consider that, and that either we work something out on Monday, or we ask you for continuance. That hasn't happened. And just to understand the context of why this is not legal, and aside from not being fair to the Manny Brothers, under the California Environmental Quality Act, which we fondly refer to as CEQA, a supplemental environmental impact report, not an addendum as was done here, is required whenever there are substantial changes to a project which require major revisions to the previous EIR, or when there are substantial changes that occur in the circumstances and the external environment. Well, we know that's all happened since 1989. The original EIR really didn't cover what's happening today in the year 2005. And in fact, the substantial changes that this project is requesting for you to approve, based on an addendum with no public notice, our clients never got a public notice, involves the construction of 2.7 million square feet of residential, mostly residential uses, rather than the 2.4 million square feet of office and hotel space that was in the original approval. In addition to that, the site plan has changed dramatically. For example, the original OPA had a 175-foot-high building consisting of 123,000 square feet at the center of the parcel. The plan before you today has a 620-foot building with 883,000 square feet at that position. So we're going from 175 to 620, from 120,000 to 880,000, and we're saying that this has been done by an addendum with no public notice, no public process, all the things that are essential if we are going to have communities work together for something that, again, we very much want to have happen, very much want to have that happen. And so I ask Councilwoman Perry, Councilwoman Perry, to please understand that we do not want to stop this project. We do not want to be forced to file a lawsuit on this project. We really ask that you give these parties 30 days to reach an agreement, to make peace, not war. This is really a defining moment as we sit here today. If this project is approved by you today, the likelihood of an amicable resolution is very, very slim. I've been doing this for some 30 years, and, and you've all watched how wars happen in the world, and it's the same in litigation. If you force these parties to litigation, we'll all be here regretting it for a long time. So give us 30 days. If at the end of that time, the city's convinced that the parties can't reach agreement, then approve the project. You've done your best. And that's really what I'm asking you to do. And I ask Councilwoman, Councilwoman Perry, again, you've done such a great job with downtown. Again, let us be on the side of Victor Franco and Central City and yourself in making this happen, and I guarantee you, I will give it every ounce of my energy and effort to see that it gets resolved, rather than have us sit here through years of litigation and having to do the process all over again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We still have a couple more speaker cards. Linda Bozum, please come forward, and Jay Ziff.
Afternoon, honorable councilmembers. Jay Ziff with PCR Services Corporation. We are the environmental consultants who worked in cooperation with the CRA on the CEQA documentation, the EIR addendum for the Metropolis project. I just wanted to take this opportunity to provide a little bit of a different view and a response to some of the concerns that have been raised by a neighboring property owner. In this instance, we worked with the CRA on an addendum rather than a full environmental impact report, because this is a project that has already been subject to a full EIR. The project that is currently before you is a modification of that project. CEQA case law is clear that even if you have a change in a project, even if you have a larger project, even if you have changes in the circumstances surrounding a project, that if those changes don't result in new significant impacts on the environment, or substantially more severe significant impacts on the environment, that would require major and important changes to your environmental report, then you do not have to go through a full environmental impact report process. You're able to prepare an addendum. In this instance, we do have a project that in some respects is larger than the original project. However, the main difference in this project and the However, the main difference in this project, in the entitled project, has to do with the residential component. And the fact of this circumstance is, and it's demonstrated very clearly in the addendum, that the addition of residential and that the mix of uses in the project as it's been modified present a much better environmental picture relative to this project site. We're still dealing with a project with four towers within the same envelope of development. When it comes to some of the key issues, such as traffic and air quality and noise, bringing the residential component into the project, the live and work environment that's created reduces trip generation by more than 50% from the earlier project. That reduction in vehicle trips and in traffic eliminates four significant unavoidable impacts that would otherwise occur with this project. And furthermore, the reduction in trips also reduces air quality and noise. When it comes to the, so some of the basic contentions and concerns that this project is resulting in changes that are important and that require an EIR, that just isn't the case, and we've shown that, I think, pretty clearly in our document. When it comes to building heights, I just want to make it clear that the entitled project, the project that could be built today, is a project that was already well above the heights of the neighboring property that has raised the concerns. The additional increase in heights with this project would not make a material difference in terms of building heights over the currently entitled project. Therefore, we haven't found any significant impacts or need for material changes to the earlier environmental impact report when it comes to blockage of private views from other adjacent developments.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Linda Bozong with DLA Piper Rednick, Greg Carey representing IDS. Mr. Casoneri didn't raise this issue, but I want to address it because it's in the letter to council, and if Mr. Casoneri does bring a lawsuit, it's important for us to address it. This is the lead agency issue where he maintains that CRA is not the appropriate lead agency. The CEQA guidelines are clear that CRA is the appropriate lead agency in this case, and I believe actually your city attorney will also probably address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And finishing up, Patrick Spillane with IDS Real Estate Group. I would like to say that we are proud as a developer to have the support of the SEIU, United Here Local 11, the Allied Trades, as well as the Central City Association. We, for over 20 years in downtown Los Angeles, have been developing projects responsibly with Taft-Hartley Union money. In fact, Metropolis will be developed in a joint venture of IDS along with Calsters, the California State Teacher Retirement System, and Cigna. To address some of the comments made by Mr. Casoneri, and I hate to do things like this, but unfortunately, they did not request 50 feet. They asked for a reduction in height of 320 feet to about 400 feet. So unfortunately, in good faith, these are very difficult people to deal with. I think the SEIU can represent the type of people that they are, and I think the issue that you were dealing with in item 25 today is indicative of the type of characters that we don't choose to deal with as a developer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item, and we'll add George Reiner's card to the file. Colleagues, he's available to answer questions if we have any. Ms. Perry, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity. The city approved a plan for the six-acre-plus site on the west side of downtown, first in 1991. It was a mixed-use office site, and the office market slumped, and there was no financing at that time available for the project. And as has been mentioned, it is set empty for 15 years. Now, the developer, a developer, has come forward with a proposal that can be built in our new housing market, providing the city with the redevelopment of a vacant site into a mixed-use project that will provide up to 836-for-sale housing units, over 800,000 square feet of office space, up to 480 hotel rooms, over 46,000 square feet of retail, creating over 4,750 jobs that did not exist before in downtown, creating a large public open space, gathering space for downtown, providing the city and the Community Redevelopment Agency with a guaranteed payment of 5.8 million with a possibility of up to 23.3 million. The developer, IDS, is in final negotiations of a grant agreement with Skid Row Housing Trust for a half million in gap funding for a supportive housing project plus an additional 260,000 for use and construction in their next two projects. This is a project that is market-driven and is doable, provides an opportunity for the city to attract new corporate users to its own headquarters building. Now, I would like to note that when concerns were raised publicly about a potential windfall for the developer, I asked a third party, third disinterested party, through the Community Redevelopment Agency to review the project, and such review was conducted by a qualified redevelopment expert, and now I am convinced that the allegations that were raised are without merit. IDS Real Estate Equity was approved by the Agency Board, CRA Agency Board, as the new development entity as prescribed in the original OPA. The payment for the T-FAR is appropriate for the development that is being proposed. The city had approved a T-FAR payment in the early 1990s, and this is a matter that we will take up at some point, as I'll be introducing a motion on this issue next month. There is still a tract map that this project has to go through, a tract map approval process. That tract map approval process is a public approval process. It would be an item that is appealable all the way to our Los Angeles City Council. There will be a second opportunity for concerned stakeholders, such as the Manny Brothers, whom Mr. Casoneri is representing today, to weigh in as part of a public process. As part of the effort to subdivide the property, there will be an automatic requirement to notify those stakeholders within a radius of this proposed project. This project is not going to break ground next week. I believe that there is time for them to meet and see what they can work out. Be happy to facilitate that along with the Community Redevelopment Agency, and look forward to the second phase of this project. I don't have any further comments or questions. I just want to say to my colleagues that the city attorney is here, and representative from the CRA is here as well. If anybody has substantive questions as to the process, the merit, the legal issues, they're here to answer your questions.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry. As always, you've done your homework and not only provided a development that'll move downtown forward, but do it in the right way as well. I just wanted to speak from the position of chair of HCD when we saw this, and we did have two continuations, I want to say for the record at least, and we put off agendizing it in the first place because of requests that folks have been giving us to allow dialogue to happen. And I have a lot of respect for Mr. Casoneri himself, but I do want to state that I was befuddled in committee and remain a little bit befuddled as to exactly what some of these issues are. I always will encourage people to speak with one another, but I want to applaud IDS Real Estate for what they're doing in terms of making sure that this is a development that moves forward in the right way, that is good for the community, that has decent paying wages. As a side note, I'm not making my decision on this. I was a little bit distressed to hear from folks who have worked for the Manny Brothers exactly what their experience has been and the treatment of the workers. I think that that has no place in the Los Angeles of today, and that is a side note which doesn't influence my decision, but I was disappointed to hear that. When we're looking at this, there's a couple of things that were brought up in committee. One had to do with residential and the impact in a new EIR. Residential has less of an impact than commercial, or at least in my experience certainly does in Hollywood and other places in similar areas. And residential can be done in downtown zoning with commercial zoning. So the idea that somehow the EIR wouldn't cover, the zoning is improper at this point, seems to be a specious argument. There are, I think, tremendous good things on this. I don't quite get this fight, having talked a little bit to both sides, continuing things. A war is a two-way thing, and if a war is started one way, that's going to be between the parties here. But I feel very comfortable talking to our city attorney. Our city attorney, we asked them to be here today, but I think we've covered, Ms. Perry and I, a number of the issues that were brought up in committee, and certainly it's something that gives me enough comfort, not only to say that the arguments that were raised seem to be confusing and not have a strong legal basis, but secondly, that this is a good development, a good development for us to move forward with, the kind of development we want downtown, and the kind of development where it's right. CCA and Labor together, it is a beautiful day here in city council. Let's capture that. Let's move forward.
Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Madam Kirk, next item, please.
Next item is item 70, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange. He's running around here somewhere.
And, Mr. President, committee members, I just want to thank the Committee of Intergovernmental Relations to ask our city attorney to move forward in this regarding the Pledge of Allegiance. And I believe, whatever you believe in, absolutely, whatever you believe in, and I believe it was Mr. Zine's motion, it's important to say under God, and whatever that falls underneath, whatever your belief is. So I just stand to support this, whatever your belief is. Thank you very much, Mr. President. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm holding a bill, a $100 bill, that I borrowed from my colleague, because I don't have any money, and it says, "United States of America, in God we trust." I have another $100. Man, you're doing good today, Herb. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just borrowing it. Here's another one, a $1 bill. United States of America, in God we trust. It's on our currency, the Pledge of Allegiance, one nation under God. I think it shows we are a nation some may not want to admit, and I go to many religious events, whether it be a Catholic event, a Jewish event, a Muslim event, a Hindu event, whatever event I go to, and they talk about God, they talk about God, a supreme being. So if you're an atheist, okay, you're going to be excluded, but every other religion, they talk about God. And we're not doing any discriminatory practice by keeping the Pledge of Allegiance, one nation under God. We brought this motion forward. It was heard by the committee. The committee supported it, and I asked my colleagues to support it, to have our city attorney join Sacramento to contain this, to continue when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, as we do here every Tuesday when we start the council session, one nation under God. There are people who want to separate church and state, and I understand that, but this is a country founded under some principles, some values, and if it's on our currency, and it's recited when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, and no matter what religion you are, everyone has a belief who has a religion in God, and I know that from my practical experience, again, visiting many different religious ceremonies and services, one nation under God. So I would ask that we would support that, have our city attorney carry that forward along with Sacramento, I think it's Sacramento School District that's carrying that forward, and join an amicus brief to have the pledge continue to have the word, "one nation under God." It doesn't divide, it simply sends a message, what this country's all about. And if you want to start burning your dollar bills and your 20s and your 5s and your 10, give them to me and I'll give them to the homeless. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendale.
You know, since I've been on the city council, this has been one issue which I second the motion to my colleague that I've gotten the most criticism of. And I've gotten the criticism because I am a progressive. I actually believe in a health, safety net for the American people. I believe in a lot of the social contracts that the Democrats used to stand for that don't anymore. And I also happen to believe in God, but my definition of God is the God of all people. When I spoke at the, on the 21st, which is today, which is the celebration of darkness, really, it's the festival of the beginning of the light in the pagan concept of God is light. The pagans used to put up a tree to bring the light going forward. That festival of lights didn't have a Christian, a Judeo-Christian, a Hindu, it didn't have any other bent except the connection to nature. To me, the definition of God is so broad that an atheist can feel comfortable in the notion that we're all children of God. As we get into this holiday season right now, many of us have different religions and express our religion in as many different ways as we are. Frankly, I think there are as many paths to God as there are people. And to love thy neighbor as thyself is truly the statement of the Lord. So I say to some of my friends who have attacked me frankly for taking this position, that they need to open their hearts and realize that God is love, and the God that is love is the God of the universe that we all should connect with. And if we can get into that kind of a sense, we're not going to spend time and energy over the years ahead defining who God is and who God isn't, and my rights and your rights. So I just hope we can not make this a big deal, but respect the white light, frankly, that's in everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 70, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Colleagues, I believe we have not taken care of the special meeting agenda that was posted for 11:30. Let's temporarily resist a regular meeting. Madam Kirk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas Garcetti, Hand, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine Padilla, 13 members present, and accor, Mr. President.
Thank you. The 11:30 a.m. special meeting is now in session. We have two items appearing on the agenda. I do not have speaker cards on either of the items. Madam Kirk.
The parcel map and a tract map and public hearings have not been held, and since there are no speaker cards, those matters can now be adopted.
Members wishing to call either of these items special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those two are approved, and along with everything else being approved today going forthwith, let's now adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting. Next item before us.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, this is general public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction. Mr. Wesson.
I just want to, I'm new here, so there's still procedures that I'm unaware of.
That's all right.
I want to know, Mr. President, would this be the appropriate time to introduce a motion that would prohibit Councilmembers Zine and Rosendale from wearing the same colors impersonating Mr. Rogers? The two of them is just a little bit too much for me to bear.
The specific rule that applies here is known as Rule 23, an urgent need to act. This is now general public comment. Council calls for Ms. Sylvia Hawkins, followed by Candy Domaris. Sylvia Hawkins, followed by Candy Domaris.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Ms. Hawkins. On item number one, we must say no as a security document of protection in California. We are asking California to be the leading state of all 58 states in beating the enemy tourists that are here. We're asking all people to please stop mailing all letters and placing them in the poster box on the street corners. Please go to the location building to pay your bills and not to the outlets or check cashing place. It is because these thieves have illegally taken our mail that didn't reach the location, starting from faking drivers, jail cell, shipping mail to another country, and are now cashing your checks and money orders at a check cashing place location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. As a member of the Knights of Columbus, I want to thank you for keeping under God in the pledge. That was brought before Congress in 1953 by the Knights of Columbus. I'm here today because, again, I want to wish you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And this is the 15th year that I've been here. I started in 1991, and this, I believe, is the second-longest council that we've had on the last council meeting of the year. So I wanted to thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Padilla. I know that you'll go on to serve us in the Senate, and I look forward to your service in that and support. in that and supporting you on that. But what was bothersome to me was this article in the paper. On Sunday, the newspaper attacked the fact that you make one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars. They did it again on Tuesday. And as someone who has been here for fifteen years, there's no one that knows how hard you work. I wish the newspaper would have gone out with you. I had the opportunity to go out with Mr. Benardi back in ninety-two, and to start the day at six p.m. in the morning and go to almost ten o'clock. I know each and every one of you do that all the time. I would ask the newspaper to go out with those of you that have children. When your children wake up in the morning and you're gone already, when they go to bed at night and you're not even home. So the newspaper, I think, is doing a disservice. I would ask them to walk with you, to go in your shoes. And I'm not doing this, and I want the public to know this, I'm not doing this because I'm an insider with you folks. I've attacked you, I've gone after you, I've argued with you. This is about the truth. I believe, and I especially with my own councilman, that you don't get paid enough. So if I had an extra dollar, I'd give it to you. But again, I want to thank you. We have a new year coming up, and I ask you to do one thing, is to listen to what people have to say to you. It's no longer the days of old, everybody is a part of this city, and so I hope that you'll do that. And I just, also along with that, just want to say that we now have a Board of Water and Power Commissioners that we should be blessed for, and I thank Mayor Verigoso for them, because had they been installed, we wouldn't have the issues that we had to bring forth for the last two years. So again, council members, have a wonderful Christmas, and thank you very much for the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Maris, on behalf of all of us. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Mr. President, there is a special one, and it was motion presented by Councilmember Garcetti, seconded by Councilmember Reyes. The city attorney will speak to the finding.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently, Soma Ariana was struck and killed in a hit-and-run incident. Immediate action is required to issue the reward offer before council's two-week recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four point two before considering the substance of motion.
Members wishing to speak on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special one is now before us. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Labange, and Mr. Reyes, and I had a tragic press conference this morning in which we had to go through five different hit-and-run accidents that have resulted in fatalities here in the city of Los Angeles in recent weeks. Five times in which people's lives were taken from them. A young boy in South Los Angeles, somebody who was visiting Los Angeles from Compton, an immigrant from Africa, a mother of three, a young mother of three, a woman visiting her grown son, a senior citizen visiting her grown son in Silver Lake for vacation. Each one of these, and then this motion as well, for the mother of three who was taken from us tragically. People have to slow down here in Los Angeles. We have twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand dollar reward motions out for many of these, as Mr. Wesson said, out there, do the right thing. The families say they forgive these folks, God will have to forgive them too, but we need to get justice for each one of these families. And if anybody was there and saw what happened on Virgil Avenue, the death right near Santa Monica Boulevard, and saw this happen, we need your information. It was December eleventh, she's being buried as we speak right now, and we believe it was a Nissan pickup truck. Please contact LAPD and let them know any information. If anybody's out there knows, you can have a fifty thousand dollar reward if this leads to the arrest of these individuals. We also had one on Lucille Avenue unfortunately as well, just a few weeks before that, in which that was the senior, the woman who was killed as well, and we believe that was a Thunderbird or another two-door Ford. But thank you, colleagues, for your support, and everybody drive safely, not only during this holiday season, but throughout the year.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to speak on special one? Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
There is a special two, motion presented by Councilmember Reyes, seconded by Councilmember Rosendahl, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently, Farrell Thomas Lotzar was struck and killed in a hit-and-run incident. Immediate action is required to issue the reward offer before council's two-week recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four point two before considering the substance of motion.
Members wishing to speak on the findings? If not, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special two now before us. Members wishing to speak on the motion itself? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. In accordance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. We do have one closed-session item remaining. Sargent, please clear the chambers. General public comment for today's meeting. Next item before us, please.
Next item before council is item number eighty-five, and that's settlement in the case of Lonny Young versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-four-thousand nine-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That is approved. Next item, please.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Members, it's the end of our agenda today, last meeting of the year. Do we have any announcements today, other than wishing everybody a happy and safe holiday season? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the first day when we are back, we will have a more proper celebration, but I just wanted to thank you, Alex Padilla, for your extraordinary leadership as president as we commemorate the last meeting, which you'll be president. You've shown the way. Give him a round of applause. You've shown the way. This meeting has set the bar very high. I liked what you were saying. We'll get people sitting down or out of the chambers. We'll all work together, I hope colleagues too in this coming year, to make sure we're here early, make sure we're doing the people's business to tighten the ship up. And Alex, you've really been able to do that over the last four years, so thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge and commemorate that service.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes. Thank you. I also want to thank you as well, Council President Padilla, for all your service to the city of Los Angeles and to your colleagues here around the horseshoe, and we'll be much more formal in January when we commemorate that. But anyway, I also wanted to take this opportunity to also say happy holidays and may everybody be safe, please, please be safe. More people get killed in car accidents who are innocent bystanders than the actual people who caused the accident. So let's keep that in mind. Help your friends and family. If somebody's drinking, please make sure that you help them get home safely, make sure that you encourage them, and even if you have to strong-arm them, into not allowing them to put themselves and other people in that danger. Again, happy holidays, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, and everybody have a Happy New Year and Happy Hanukkah. And this, all of my Jewish friends are telling me that this is the first time they can remember that actual Christmas Day and at sundown that day, it will be Hanukkah. So that's wonderful to hear that and see that going on. I guess many, many people will be celebrating on the same day their individual way to celebrate their own religious beliefs. Thank you.
Other announcements? Mr. Labange.
The DWP Light Festival continues through the holiday season, and enjoy the ride. Come to the Los Angeles Zoo Park and enjoy it. I know constituents of yours from throughout the city have come to enjoy that light festival. They're welcome to come. And also, if you come in the daytime, come and visit the Los Angeles Zoo and the great activity that's going on there. Thank you very much again, Alex, for your leadership, and Mr. Garcetti, we look forward to the new year, but we thank Mr. Padilla for the last several years. Thank you.
And for free passes to the Festival of Lights, call Mr. Labange's office at two and three four seven three seven zero.
Free passes for everybody.
Right, well, I know, but you go, Dennis, because there's free food there, so.
Free food.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say also thank you for your leadership and all the things that you've done in the sense of making the council a better place during your tenure as president. I'd just like to advise the public of several meetings that's going on on the eighth, ninth, tenth, and fifteenth during January, this is our last meeting, but it will be hosted by the Commission on Youth and Families to talk about issues of safety and crime in the community. There are eight meetings, two in each of the four districts I named, on Tuesday, January fifth, in the eighth district at five-thirty at the Epic Center, Serity, January seventh at ten a.m., and CD fifteen at the Milken Youth Center on East Century on Tuesday, January tenth at five-thirty, and CD nine at South Park on East Fifty-first Street. My eyes are going bad. Fifty-first Street. Then Thursday, January the twelfth, and CD ten at five-thirty at Jim Gilliam Park on South La Brea. On Thursday, January nineteenth, CD fifteen at five-thirty p.m. at Markham Middle School. And on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, CD ten at five-thirty at Darcy High. Thursday, January twenty-sixth, CD nine at Ross Snyder at five-thirty. And the last one, Tuesday, January thirty-first, CD eight at five-thirty at Algen Sutton on South Hoover.
Other announcements? Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, my announcement is to basically say thank you all around the horseshoe for welcoming me to this august body, July one of this year, as we reflect on the year, and to the two new colleagues that have joined me since Jose Weezer and Herb Wesson were a group of fifteen. I frankly want to thank the president for his leadership, and I look forward to his further leadership. And I want to thank all the city employees that I've had the pleasure of interacting with, and I want to thank all those constituents that participate in the political process and wish everybody a healthy and prosperous two thousand and six.
Announcements? Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, I also want to acknowledge you, your leadership, and you've kept this body moving forward with committee assignments. And people see us on television and our comments, and they hear the public, but they don't recognize the people in the background. I'd like to have Mr. Miller bring our staffers that we have here assembled around the horseshoe. If you could please come forward, get on television, so the viewers at home, this is our last meeting for the year. We'd like to have the people at home see there is a staff that supports us and all the work that we do. Come up behind that curtain, let's go, come on. Jerry Miller, bring him on out.
Laura.
Come on, Laura Avak.
Laura.
Let's get them all on camera. They seldom if ever get on camera, they do all of the staff work, from the clerk's office, our council offices, CLA's office, CAO's office, Wendy Groves dragging Avak to the floor, the city clerk's office, our sound man. Come on then, Mr. Sound Man. Our sound man who survived the MetroLink train crashes is here with us. So all of the staff that we see here on camera, and there's many more that are up in their offices working, we want to acknowledge all of you for what you do every single day, the agendas that are published, the TV photo sound. We have our city, well, the city clerk here we see frequently. Who else? Tom Labange. Sergeant Arms, yeah, Sergeant Arms, come on out. Sergeant Arms. Sergeant Arms. All of the fine people that make this happen for us at City Hall. It's not only Christmas and Hanukkah, but it's the end of the year. And what? No, we're not cutting yet, Hollywood. So there we go, just a small glimpse of the people every day who make it happen. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everyone here at City Hall that makes this happen, and thank you for the viewers who watch us. We wish you all a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and God bless America.
God bless America. Actually, two announcements on my part. One is, I'm surprised we made it all the way around the horseshoe with both Mr. Parks here and Mr. Smith here, and not one mention of the Rose Bowl. That's a big event coming up during the break.
We don't need to mention it because we know the results already.
That...
You'll like this last part.
But just a brief thank you to all of you colleagues, as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, we'll do something a little more formal the Tuesday that we all come back on, January tenth. But it has been a tremendous pleasure and a tremendous honor serving as president of this body for the last four and a half years. Where's the time fly? We've had our ups, we've had a few downs, we've had a lot more ups than downs, and tackled pretty much everything under the sun. So now I get to be like some of you all, press my button even more to actually weigh in on some debates, weigh in from the horseshoe, whereas many times I've sort of just laid back, let you all carry the ball forward, as I've tried to preside over these meetings. Nothing but the best for the future of this council, and I turn it over into some great hands in Eric. Other than his age, which still worries me a little bit, I know he's more than ready, more than ready to take the reins here. But just a thank you to all of you for the honor, and Laura, come here.
Laura, yeah.
For all the times you all say thank you to me. I say thank you to Laura, because I couldn't have gotten here without her and couldn't have helped manage and lead this council without her. You never could be told no by a nicer person, or where your motion is going. So thank you, Laura. And again, more formalities, more formalities in January. And I guess with that, journey motions. Please rise for journey motions. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us today to adjourn in memory of Esther J. Garcia, who's the mother of Catherine Omero, who is an executive assistant in CLA's office to Mr. Jerry Miller. And Catherine's mother, Esther, passed away December seventeenth, two thousand and five of cancer. Another daughter works in the Bureau of Sanitation as well, and the husband of Esther is a long and well-known retired General Services Department employee. Esther is well-loved, has definitely been a part of the city family, as is her family continuing to be. She's survived by her four children, thirteen grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren, and our thoughts are with the entire family, Catherine, her sister, of course, all her brothers and sisters, the grandchildren, great-grandchildren too.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to adjourn today in the memory of Diego Vincent Olivares, who passed away on Thursday, December fifteenth, at the age of three. He is the first grandson of our local Congresswoman, Lucille Royballard, and the great-grandson of the late Congressman, Ed Royball, and who also represented the fourteenth council district here in City Hall. Diego was born with microcephaly, a rare developmental disease. He spent his first year at home, cared for by his two loving parents, and celebrated his first birthday at the neighborhood park with friends and family. For the last couple of years, Diego was cared for by the staff at Health Bridge Care Facility in Orange County. Although only three and just a few weeks away from his fourth birthday, Diego lived a very loving life. Diego survived by a good friend and father Ricardo, and mother Rory, his brother Santiago, and sister Doris.
Mr. Garcetti.
Just want to be a second on that.
Hall members.
Hall members, and our thoughts are with Rick, Lori as well. Spent some time, Diego was a real gift for the short time that he was here on Earth.
Ms. Clerk. Ms. Cruel.
I just want to add, had the pleasure of spending lots of time with the family. Not only their son who passed away, but their other son that they have and the joy of their life. And I know how devastating it was, the original birth, but how important their time with their son has been, and how supportive their family and the community has been to them. So I love to Rick and the entire family.
Other tributes? Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and to the Congresswoman and her family. They've been through a very dramatic and emotional year, and I know that they are a resilient and loving family. And unlike all the ups and downs that they face in their lives, they will get through this together as a family. And my heart goes out to all of them. I would also like to adjourn in memory of Mother Mary Knolls, a true visionary and leader in the 9th Council District. Mary Imelda Knolls continued to bring her intense energy and community pride to the 9th District right up until the day of her passing. She leaves a great legacy of protecting her neighborhood from blight, rallying with the community and working closely with LAPD to improve the quality of life for her family, friends, and neighbors. She first became active in the 9th District in 1953, when she joined the local PTA of her daughter's school at 61st Street Elementary School. After the 1965 riots, she worked as a block club member and then became a community leader. One of her favorite stories was about working with then-councilman Gilbert Lindsay. Her first encounter with him was a memorable one. The city had decided to tear down an old dilapidated apartment building at the end of her street to change the zoning from four to six units. Mrs. Knolls and her neighbors were opposed to the change. The day demolition was to take place, she stood in front of the tractor and dared them to move. Her simple actions stopped the city from changing the zoning of the complex. And from that day forward, Councilwoman Lindsay became one of Mrs. Knolls' biggest supporters and best friends. As a staff member, and if you knew her, you would know that that was true. She was very, very, she was a fun-loving lady. As a staff member and as a councilwoman, I've had the pleasure of working with Mrs. Knolls, and it was a rewarding experience each and every time I was able to sit in her living room at a block club meeting. She was always proactive and positive. She always said there was no time to dwell on the negative. This is how she lived her life. She will be missed. I had the pleasure of attending her funeral this weekend, and it was truly beautiful. There were many community members there. The senior lead officers from the area came to just bear witness to her life, and it's just a measure of the impact she had on all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Wesson.
Yes. This morning, we had a, several members had a press conference where we discussed individuals from our districts that were killed in hit-and-run accidents. And I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Demetri A. Grant, a young nine-year-old boy who was killed while crossing the street with his brother hand in hand by Dorsey High School in the district. And for anyone that's out there that can hear my voice, if you have any information where it relates to this death, please call the Los Angeles Police Department. The second adjournment motion I just received a few hours ago, many of you in this building know my Deputy Chief of Staff, Deron Williams. Maggie Mae Hawkins was a woman who befriended him as a child, and he refers to her as his mother. She just passed away about two hours ago, and I'd like to adjourn in her memory.
All members. Ms. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request adjourned in memory of Enrique Hernandez. Enrique Hernandez, a one-time LAPD officer, pioneered sophisticated private security methods and developed an international reputation as the founder of Pasadena-based Intercon Security Systems. Has died, he was 74 years of age. Born in Jerome, Arizona, May 14th, 1931, moved to Los Angeles with his parents and eight siblings in 1941.
Ms. Zain, we presented yesterday. I'll add you to that tribute.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned, and the council stands in recess until...